Thank you and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school committee, Milton School Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. And we'll call this meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we need to approve our agenda for this evening. And Glenn, do you see Lisa's?
She is.
Okay, so great. We're going to actually make one change that I know of to move our Climate Action Planning Committee report. We're joined by our school committee representative, Lisa Troy, by Zoom. So she'll be able to provide that update to us following Citizen Speak. We'll just move that up earlier in the agenda. Are there any other changes that anybody knows about? Okay, so in that case, we can approve the agenda and move into Citizen Speak, which is the opportunity for public comment for members of our community to come and share perspective with the school committee. We set aside in our policy up to 15 minutes for people to come and share their views with us for up to three minutes at a time. If anybody is here to participate in a public comment through Citizen Speak, we just ask that you introduce yourself at the beginning and then we'll keep track of time. And I believe we have one person here in person who would like to participate in Citizen Speak. If you are joining us online and wish to participate, can you please raise your hand at this time and then we'll know to be able to promote you when it's your turn. But for right now, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Good evening. Kevin Donahue, 203 School Street. And to quote my Grandma Ginny on Sunday morning, "Can't save souls after five minutes." So we'll keep this brief. I'm here tonight in my capacity as a Milton Public School alumnus, father of four students, Milton Public Schools, former school committee chair and voter to state publicly and forcefully that Senator Walter Timmelti is failing Milton Public Schools. The land swap bill essential for building our new school has remained stalled, a single procedural hurdle from its finish line in the Massachusetts Senate for weeks with no progress. There is now under a month left in the legislative session, and this bill must still clear the House of Representatives after moving through the Senate. I've heard reasons, excuses for this lack of progress, but I find them unconvincing. A legislator with 25 years of experience on Beacon Hill should be capable of navigating mundane and even exceptional procedural hurdles on an issue this important. Rather, I infer from this inaction that the Honorable Senator has chosen or has been asked to pocket veto the construction of a school that has the overwhelming support of the school committee and Milton Town Meeting at a time of year when families are distracted and have their attention focused elsewhere. I assume this is because he is of the opinion that various voting blocks in town that oppose the school are more vital to his continued political success than those that support the school, especially now that he has chosen to forego reelection to the State House for the safer elected position of Norfolk County Clerk of Courts. This delay will result in setting the timeline for the project back at least one year and likely more. It will result in millions of dollars in inflation-related added costs to the eventual project and force our students, my children, to continue to be educated in substandard conditions for years longer. I urge the Milton Public School community to help in proving their electoral relevance and ensure that Senator Timmelti's legacy in the Massachusetts General Court is one of support for public education in the town of Milton. Please contact the Senator and express your support for the Milton Public School building project. He can be reached at walter.timmelti@masenate.gov or 617-722-1643. That's 617-772-1643. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Donahue. Are there any participants?
One on Zoom.
Beverly Ross Denny. Good evening. It's nice to see some friendly faces this afternoon for this evening. Beverly Ross Denny, 107 Columbine Road. I'm here this evening to talk about the residency policy that is currently under review by the school committee. Several months ago, Dave Humphries, who's the chair of the warrant committee, as well as other warrant committee members, shared concerns and made accusations about rampant residency fraud in Milton and gave the district a charge to begin investigating them and improving our policy. And part of the motivation to do that was to save money. In response, now, mind you, we had no evidence. We just had accusations. In response, the Milton Public Schools first and foremost researched policies and practices of other districts to determine which of these policies they found most useful. Three, updated the current policy with recommendations for changes. And I have been told, I do not have any facts on this, the district has begun to conduct investigations and have identified residency fraud across the town. It was then, actually, the most important point of all this. It was a very sound process, right? Someone makes a claim, there's their concerns, we do research, we do investigations. The warrant committee then shared that, in fact, they had no facts. It was just based on someone's innuendo and accusations that we found not, there was no data to back what was shared. I guess the most important thing to me is that we actually, as a town, reconsider whether or not we should look at this policy at all. It's not that Milton does not have a policy. We have residency verifications at several times during a student's lifetime within the district. Are there students that will fall through the crack in every district? I don't think I've ever worked with a district that did anything perfect because it's immediately imperfect. There's no institution I've ever worked for that's been perfect because institutions are made by people that are fallible and mistakes happen. But I am concerned at the swift response that these accusations received when we have hard data about student outcomes for subgroups, knowledge about what's happening in very specific classrooms, and this very sound process for problem solving is not used in any other place where we actually have data that shows chronic failures. But we were very quick to respond to baseless accusations by two people or several people in one committee. That concerns me. So I'm asking today that, A, you reconsider whether or not you should make a policy recommendation at all. I have spoken to multiple individuals, elected officials, about what is happening, and they expressed concern and willingness to engage. Second, I want to know if we actually did investigations and found fraud. How much money will the district save and how will those resources be redeployed? And third, I would love to hear that exact process that went, the district went through, talking to other districts, researching their policies and practices, coming up with recommendations, conducting investigations, apply to instruction across the Milton Public Schools. Because it was actually a very sound process. I just wish we consistently use that in any place we have data that shows there's a need, whether it's how students feel about themselves, how students stay there or treat it. My time might be up. I thank you for listening and I hope you are responsive. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else with their hand raised?
No.
Recording in progress. Both of the, obviously, we don't respond directly to comments during public comment, but obviously, both of the topics that were raised this evening are things that we'll be talking about tonight in the course of our committee reports. So if members want to sort of address issues that have been raised, still, we'll have the opportunities to do that in those discussions. At this time, even though we do have a superintendent's report and a chair's report, as stated at the beginning, we would like to go ahead and have our Climate Action Planning Committee report first here to begin our, the rest of our meeting. So I'm Dr. Pavlicek. Can you please promote Lisa Troy to be a panelist? Thank you, Lisa, for joining us this evening. While, while we are working to promote Lisa, Amanda, just for your benefit, since you weren't here last fall, I believe it was, I think it may be last summer, we were asked by the select board to appoint a member to represent the school committee on the town's Climate Action Planning Committee. And a number of residents in town submitted applications with interest to fulfill that role. And we selected Lisa Troy with her background in both education and climate-related work. And so, Lisa, we've really appreciated your service in representing the school committee this year. And I know it's been a while since we had you in the fall visit with us because that's back when we were still meeting in Town Hall. And now here we are and very glad to welcome you virtually into our space for tonight's school committee meeting. So we're just excited to hear any updates you might like to share with us from the Climate Action Planning Committee, the work that you all have been up to in the past few months, and anything else that you would like us to know. But thanks for coming. Can you hear us, Lisa? Yeah.
Do you want to put something in the chat to her to let her know we're working on sound?
Thank you. Sorry. Bow, do you have one of those signs to make to put in front of the camera this time?
I don't think the camera's not on.
Recording in progress.
Yeah.
The camera's working.
Oh, here you go. Okay, oh, good. Lisa, hi. So sorry. Wait, can you hear me now? I apologize.
Yeah, I'm glad to be joining you all this evening. Sorry I'm not there in person. I'm Lisa Troy. I am on the Climate Action Planning Committee, representing you all on the school committee. And so I just have some updates to give you. I can get them in a more formal form for you in the coming days, but was not able to get that all set up right before this meeting. So some of our highlights this year is that the CAP, Climate Action Planning Committee, we have our own website now as on the town of Milton website. We also, well, the town also has a resilience and sustainability page, which contains a lot of good information about what the town is doing to prepare for climate change. So I recommend, you know, everyone take a look at that. Some really awesome news is that we had a student participate with the committee, Kira Nozel, who was in AP government class, and she conducted a survey of students for us. I think she reached 149 students, asked them a number of questions related to their feelings on climate change, where they get their information, as well as how they get to school. And so it's probably not surprising to you that 57% of the students surveyed get to school by a gas vehicle or gas car, so not a bus. Other highlights of the CAP this, this year is that we are expanding our membership and we're also expanding it to include a high school student that lives in Milton. The student could attend any school but just needs to be living in Milton. And we've also expanded the committee to include some additional adults as well because there's a lot to do. It's a lot of work and we need as many people to get involved as possible. In addition to being formally on the committee, we also have different task groups. And so anyone could volunteer to, to help us out. So I'm looking at transportation issues in the town, and that's our largest source of greenhouse gases. And certainly, we need all the help we can get. We're starting to enter our public outreach stage of the process. And so any advice or help you all have on the school committee would be greatly appreciated. We might be able to, you know, leverage the PTOs to send out materials or to, to highlight what we're doing. In addition, you know, I've met with some stakeholders, including Superintendent Burrows. I've met with Safe Routes to School, with the Glover PTO. I've reached out to the other PTOs, haven't heard back, but I'm hoping that maybe you guys can provide me some alternate contact information. Another big milestone this year, big highlight, was the adoption of the specialized stretch code by Town Meeting. And this, I guess, amps up the sustainability part of our building codes. And so this is something that might affect the school buildings down the road. Some of our other action items that we've been working on, the, we have a final greenhouse gas survey and recommendations that we had some consultants put together. And we are looking at action items related to energy in buildings, transportation and mobility, waste and wastewater, conservation and land use, governance and leadership. And certainly, when we look at buildings, right, that includes commercial, residential and municipal buildings such as a potential new school. With transportation, you know, I've talked to the superintendent about electric buses and some apps that could be used to promote ride share and also increase, you know, non-motorized ways to get to school. I really understand for parents that it needs to be safe and convenient for their kids to not get dropped off or, you know, not take the bus. So that's very, you know, foremost on my mind. So that's my basic overview, and I guess if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks so much, Lisa. That's a lot of great updates. Does anybody, and I hope you may have missed in the beginning my remarks about how much we appreciate you serving and representing us on this important committee and doing such important work. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa about any of the updates that she shared? So certainly, it would be, I think we should follow up and, you know, certainly help however we can to share information through the schools. I'm not sure, you know, whether there might be a mechanism through the school newsletters or, you know, the PTOs would be one avenue, but then there could also be potentially ways of including information with communications that go out from central office potentially. So we can stay in touch about that and
Sure, that'd be great.
Would love to definitely help. I think that's great to hear that you all are including a student member. That's also something that we've really focused on this year with Bow and Peter, to include the voices of our student representatives, and it's so valuable. So that sounds like a great plan.
Well, I was, I was
Very excited for that.
And Lisa, I was wondering whether having you potentially work with our student representatives here or government here too could be a really cool way to bring some of this into our schools as well and have, have students be carrying this and talking about it. I know there's a lot of interest.
Definitely. Yeah, I would very much be interested in any outreach if, if there's a, you know, environmental group at the school. Or I could coordinate with some of the, you know, environmental science teachers, or all the science teachers. That'd be great.
Okay, well, thank you very much again. And we will, as I mentioned, we're, we're grateful to you. We just have sort of been through the process of solidifying our various subcommittee assignments and advisory committee assignments of the school committee members, and we're really thankful that you're willing to continue representing us. That, I think that will bring great continuity as, as you described, the ramping up of the, the work of the CAP. So we will look for ways to stay, maybe have you come back, you know, quarterly or something like that. We are going to take a pretty, a pause on school committee meetings through the summer, but one thing we're gonna talk about
Through July.
Right, through July.
Yes.
And then we come back in August because then school starts back up in August, obviously. But we'll be in touch with you once our, as our schedule begins to solidify and we'll look for chances to, to slot you in. And thanks again.
Yeah, that sounds great. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Lisa.
Bye.
I don't know where to look. I want to look up at you, you know, and
The sun come from here.
Well, it's usually on that screen.
What's on that screen is only what's on my screen.
Yeah.
It's the one that says Milton Access TV under is the one that goes out.
Okay, well.
I think looking at us is fun.
All right. I'm looking at who's here, but I'm talking to, you know, I'm listening to someone up there. So anyway, now we're, now we're here because now, Peter, I'm going to hand it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Great. So fresh on our minds, we had a great graduation on Sunday, and thank you all who made it. And yeah, it was just wonderful to, to take part in my first graduation here. It ran very smoothly. It was very hot, but everyone kind of survived and, yeah, it was, it was a really, really nice event. We also just now, for those listening, just said goodbye to our retirees and had a reception for them outside in the courtyard. And that was also really nice to acknowledge the many, many years of work that they've, they've given to MPS. This time of year, as you all know, are there many events like this happening at the school level, at the district level? At the same time, there's, there's so much work to get done and, and you're kind of trying to problem solve things before the end of the year. So it's a very interesting time of year at schools where you're, you're kind of like, feel like you're kind of rolling through, through time and space a little bit, but really, really kind of exciting to see, you know, the work that, that you've accomplished over the year, both on the kind of structural district level and, you know, watching kids and their learning, which is our main goal. So one thing I wanted to mention in my report tonight is a reminder about our June 10th community event. This is happening at Pierce from 6:00 to 7:30. And the design of this is to really provide an opportunity for the community to come in and learn more about the work that we've done over the course of this year through my entry plan, through the work we've done with the priority report, and onward to the kind of tail end of the implementation plan, which we're currently working on now. The, it's not going to be a sit and get kind of event where you sit there and eat popcorn and listen to someone talk and look at slides. We're going to make it really engaging. So I've asked all of our leaders, this includes our principals, assistant principals, directors of, of all of our different subject areas to be at this event. So it's, it's going to be an opportunity for people to talk with and meet a lot of different leaders throughout MPS. It's gonna, you're gonna have about 15 minutes with kind of small groups of leaders, and depending on how many participants we have, we'll kind of figure out how many groups we have. And then every 15 minutes, you'll kind of switch out of that group and, and move to another group. So it'll be a chance to meet, you know, if you've never met Glenn before.
Consider yourself lucky.
You would, you would have the chance to talk with him, but you wouldn't be in a conversation with him for 45 minutes. You would talk with him for 15 minutes and, you know, ask questions about finance and, you know, kind of odd historical information that I, I know Glenn holds. And then you would transfer to someone else and maybe ask Danielle, who's in the audience here, about special ed and, and other things that are important in that area. So hoping to get as many people as we can to this because I think it's, it's really important that we continue to bring community back in as we're building out our vision. The, this group of leaders, this 30 group, 30-strong group, is meeting on June 26th. After school is out, we're going to be doing some pre-retreat planning. We've got retreats happening through August where we're coming together as a team. So this event's going to be helpful for this entire team to engage with community and bring that information back as we're doing that planning on the 26th for kind of wrapping up our implementation planning and then planning out our, our, essentially kind of our work plan for '24, '25. So looking forward to it and just kind of putting a plug out there for everyone listening to, if you can attend, it's, it's only an hour and a half, and I think it's going to be fun and exciting. Another important thing I wanted to kind of talk about, and it's, I think, topical because information that's gone out this week is around community schools, and kind of wanted to give an update from the previous presentation that Martha gave to the school committee, is, was that a month ago? Okay, that's, that's what I thought. Last month, since that presentation where we talked about some of the design changes and structural changes that we were making to scale up the program, and structural changes that we were making to scale up the program, we received more information back, both we, we know kind of where we are after a month in terms of staffing, and we know what the, we have a clearer idea now of, of how many, how many slots we need. So we're continuing to problem solve this to, to, to really kind of, in whatever ways we can, get to the finish line and, and provide this, this opportunity for people that it is, you know, as we've talked about over the past year, really, really important. And we see it as a school issue and a community issue too, like kind of collectively and, and, you know, I think as we've talked about it, we're open to any and all ideas about ways to, to expand to the, the capacity that we need. I asked Glenn to put together a few slides just to kind of share the work that we've done over the last, I would say, three weeks as we've been working to kind of respond to where we are and try to continue pushing this forward. So I'm gonna hand it off to Glenn here to share these few slides and go from there.
Sure. So as the superintendent said, we've been looking at where we are right now and where we feel we need to be. First off, where we are. The enrollment has gone up over 19% over the last two years in after-school programs. Unfortunately, demand has gone up 32%, which is not a recipe for making people happy necessarily. I mean, we, to the extent that we've tried to, we've succeeded in expanding the program, we still have a lot of demand, and it's partially because of rising enrollment. As you've heard before, this year's entering, next year's entering kindergarten is the second largest kindergarten we've ever had. And so the problem becomes, how do we continue to grow the program in a way that actually meets the demand of families? We were looking at some other programs. We have a survey of 21
Do you all see that there are slides for this?
Yeah. 21 similar communities. We have the second highest enrollment per site of these communities. When we talk about waiting lists, it's important to know that all but three of them have waiting lists. Most programs cannot deal with all the enrollment that would be appreciated. Our ratio, as Martha mentioned a month ago, is high, 21 to 1, 13 to 1 was the average of our comparable communities, and that's the recommended average. One of the features that differentiates Milton from other communities, we don't have really other alternatives. A lot of these other communities have YMCA's, they have boys clubs, they have girls clubs, they're, they're competing interests for after-school programs. We are pretty much the only game in town for after-school programs, and that makes a difference too. I mean, we don't have the ability to share this with, with other organizations. So what have we been doing? This past winter, we're really working, as, as Martha had mentioned a month ago, to, you know, increase the scale of the program. Recently, we've merged some positions, the, for instance, the recess aides at lunchtime is a three-hour position. We've merged that through collective bargaining with the after-school aide, after-school group leader position to make it basically a full-time job, in the hopes that with the full-time jobs come benefits, comes a variety of different things that will help encourage people to look to these jobs. One of the issues we're finding, you know, certainly is it, it is just difficult to find people to, to take three-hour-a-day, five, five-afternoon-a-week jobs. We've increased hours of some of the other part-time positions to get them up to 20, so even though they're part-time, they might be health insurance eligible. Again, that will cost, but it will hopefully also encourage some more people to look at these jobs as, as potential. What we're looking at now is we've looked at some salaries in these comparable districts of the, we did the survey, and we find that we're in a comparable position with respect to salaries. We pay pretty much what the others do, but we've decided the fact that we can't seem to find people is that we're gonna crank it up anyway. And we're gonna, we're adding in some cases between 10 and 25% to some of these salaries to make us the most attractive program for the limited availability of staff that are out there. So we've, we're, we just were working on that over the last few days, looking at what the numbers will be. We have some tentative charts of how that will play out, but in some cases, it's a significant, you know, an introductory aid might go from 17 to like $22 or $24 an hour. We hope that will attract people in. On the upper end, our supervisors tend to be on the, the very comparable range, but we're still gonna push them up a bit to try to make them a little more attractive than what some of the other communities. And so right now, we have postings out. We do it through school spring, but we're on Indeed as well and a variety of other sites. And we actually have out there, we have this up 42 position openings for group leaders, recess aide, group full-time positions, inclusion aides, kindergarten monitors with the increased kindergarten. We want to really separate out the kindergarten. That's gotta be treated very differently in an after-school program. Tenants monitor is just a monitor of the comings and goings of 130 to 150 kids at a site at a time, and some inclusion, inclusion aides and an after-school inclusion coordinator. So we have these, these postings are out there currently. Job descriptions are out there. We hope if people are interested in working with younger children, that's a possibility. We're reaching out to places like Curry College for some of their students who might want internships and things like this. You know, as, as we move forward, we keep trying to expand, and as we can expand, we can add more people off the, the waiting list as it is currently. But it's been difficult to, to get the people, you know, it's not unique to Milton. Finding people to fill positions regardless of the positions has been challenging. So that's where we are at the moment, and if it doesn't work, we'll just keep talking and try to find other ways to make it work. I mean, right now, we're, we're doing what we can. I mean, as I say, we run a lot on high school students, but high school students need supervision. It's, it is that middle level between the program director and the high school students who are supervising the students, that middle level of adult coordinators that has been the challenge to, to hire and retain.
Can I ask a question? The adult coordinators are the college students?
Not necessarily. No. They're, they tend to be our, well, we've been past dependent a lot on our instructional aides.
Yeah.
But as of this, as of coming up this year, the instructional aides are 35 hours a week for their day job. All right? So you, once they start talking about working in the after-school program and potentially 15 hours a week, there isn't long you will survive on a 50-hour-a-week work week as an hourly employee. I mean, the overtime is not the issue in terms of payment. The issue, people will burn out. This is not an easy thing to do for that kind of time. One of the three districts that actually has a larger population and, I don't believe has a waiting list, has only part-time aides in their school day, so those people run their after-school program. But where we have full-time aides, it is harder and more challenging for them to work in the after-school program. So we really have to look for a different source of staffing.
And you mentioned that we increased the hours for the lunch aides. Do we have any takers who want to work at the after-school program?
Well, a couple of them do already, so that's not really much of a gain, but we are trying to encourage, you know, make it basically at 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM or roughly, depending on the school year, the school day job, where they will work as recess aides in the daytime, help out with, you know, bus duty in the afternoon and continue on into the after-school program. It becomes a full job for them, you know, benefit, pension-eligible, the whole, the whole nine yards. So, you know, even if they're not currently our people, it's a hope that we might be able to get some people that way. Obviously, the people we have working for us as recess aides will have the first shot at that, but to the extent that some are not interested, we'll look for other ways to do it. But, you know, it's a, most of the program is run by part-time staff. I'm speaking primarily of after-school because the before-school hasn't been an issue. We've had the staff to deal with before-school more, but it's really the after-school that has been the challenge.
Yeah. I have one more question. How about for teachers who, who are already full-time teachers here, but might have hours in the afternoon and doesn't have a family yet and want to pick up this extra part-time job? How would they be paid or is that a possibility?
It is a possibility. Normally, there is a, a part of the state ethics law that prevents people from holding two different jobs in a single community, and that used to be an issue for teachers and in fact, educational aides working in the community schools program. But what we've done with all the collective bargaining agreements is actually put language in it to say, this is, can be looked at as part of your duties, even though the union doesn't negotiate your salary in the after-school program. So we link them together. So it's a way to get around the fact that those are, the only other thing is you have to go to the select board and have them designated as special employees, and it's a variety of things you have to do to, to do that. But we've, we've managed through negotiation and to allow that. Again, the same problem runs into it, teachers who are full-time teachers, you know, there's, you know, we do have some teachers who come in for an hour and do something in the afternoon, but staying till 6 o'clock after you've taught a full day is terribly appealing to most people.
So I'm wondering about, you know, there's two sites that I think could be a great pool for talent, and that's thinking of UMass Boston and Curry College. However, if you're thinking about students who actually need to work, transportation may be an issue. And so how can we get creative around addressing that barrier? Sort of, you know, for my organization, some of our students that are currently, you know, in college and supporting our programming only for a few hours a day, they are able to get to our site. However, getting to Milton via public transportation.
Even though we're in an BTA community?
Even then, even then, it is a challenge if you get off the trolley and have to, you know, find your way to Cunningham or Collicott. Tucker is a different story. I used to walk up Blue Hill Ave all the time and could get home because I live there. But, you know, anywhere else, it's a bit tougher. So just thinking about, I think the pool is there, students that need jobs, and we need, we need them.
So are you talking about setting up like a shuttle van or something that would bring them from Curry to?
We have. I mean, if you want to speak to the agreement we have recently with Curry College, I mean, there are possibilities there, and we have a van, they have vans, and maybe something can be worked out that way too.
Yeah, no, they're definitely open, so, and in all partnerships, so, yeah, that's a good idea. And that's kind of, you know, as we're looking at kind of like, how do we do this? We do have to think, like you're saying, we do have to think differently about, we can't just wait for something to happen, right? So, I mean, as we're looking at what we do, this is kind of our next step in terms of, you know, we did that redesign thing, now we're gonna up the salaries and push this out and, you know, potentially beyond the normal ways we do through Indeed and School Spring, but other, other places that, you know, maybe have pools of, of employees that we can go talk to or, you know, I don't know about like a three-to-six window for a college student, if that's a good time or a bad time or.
For some of them, it does. They arrange their schedule around
Yeah.
That gig that they have, and then the job they find.
Or even like working or even connecting with, you know, local universities with early childhood ed programs who, you know, tie, tie it to some kind of course requirement or you get paid and you get credit or, right? Like there're just, there are a lot of things that we could do. And I think the, the benefit of where we're at now is for a lot of programs, they're in a situation, a similar situation, but they don't have the funds to be able to do some of the things we can do because of our fund balance.
Yeah, I think of Northeastern too, co-ops. They're available for a whole year. They're looking for, this is for, you know, somebody who's in human services, education. This is actually a pretty good option.
I also think of like other, you know, a lot of it is looking at education-based places, but even, I mean, I think about like, you know, when your kids are young, where do you look for childcare? And I know that it's different, but are there organizations, I used to do it at Care.com or other places, like move beyond that because people are looking for, you know, they want to work with kids. They're doing, it's not necessarily they're doing instruction, it's that desire. So do you move beyond the typical, like I would never, you know, if I was looking for something and you, that wasn't, you wouldn't know to go on School Spring or, or, you know, is Indeed the place? So are there other places beyond that to think creatively that, like ask nannies, where would you find a job? Ask childcare providers, where would you look for a job? And that might be another option or another.
Yeah. Or social services as a whole.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I also think that like when, when the kids are younger, we, we tend to need that childcare more. When the kids are getting older, they can go to other activities, like starting from third grade up, my kids started to have a lot more other opportunity to join like the town sports or taekwondo or dance or, or other activities that they can do outside of the community. So perhaps, how can, maybe, maybe collaborate with the Park and Rec department and see how we can make more after-school programs for, like consistent programs for, for kids in the after-school hours for the student in the town to utilize when they get older. And another suggestion is like, I think the two sides that have, the, the lottery issue is Cunningham and Collicott because there are a lot of students, right?
And Glover.
And Glover. So the one, another location that's close to Cunningham and Collicott is the Cunningham Hall. Like, how can we utilize the Cunningham Hall space for after-school activities that perhaps can take some students who are not enrolled in after-school but still able to have some kind of childcare service for an hour or an hour and a half until the parents are able to come home to pick them up? So maybe some kind of dance program there, or I know there's a bowling there, so maybe there's
It's not school property is the only thing.
It's town property, right?
No, it's private.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
But you're raising the point that there's like short, short-term things to do and longer-term things to do, and the longer-term things definitely include talking to the Parks and Rec and organizations in town about how we can work together to expand the opportunities and the responsibility for helping our, members of our community have access to care after school. And in the short term, I mean, hopefully, these changes that you're putting in place will, will work, will, and, and the, like you're talking about, Selena, the need to like think even further creatively in the recruiting.
Well, there's two ways to the transportation piece because there's bringing employees in. I mean, the big issue that parents have is they're in Boston or somewhere else and can't get back by 2:20 or 3:00 to pick up the child, and even if there is a Parks and Rec on the other side of town, the kid can't get there.
Yes.
Right? So that's just another thing that we were, we've been talking about is on the, the transportation side, is there something that we could do in terms of our current bus routes or, you know, other ways to support? Wait, you know, it, it gets a little complicated if you're, then start bussing students all over, you can't really do that, but we were kind of talking about ways to, like for example, if we partnered with Parks and Rec and they had a program on, you know, Kelly Field or, you know, somewhere, we would be able to get kids from different schools to, to that site for that program. So there's also that if we're, you know, thinking about this, I was mentioning earlier, at the town level, how do we address this? And I think in our study of other towns and cities, they are, these are town, the town as a whole is, is definitely engaged in this. And we think that's an important piece of this too, is that we're, it requires us to think outside of our bubble too. It requires us to think outside of our bubble to.
Do we have any data on pickup times? So I think to Val's point of like teachers staying afterwards or you made the comment of like, you know, staying till six o'clock after working a full day. That's a long day and very few people are gonna do. But I don't know if we have data on, we have a hundred and thirty kids at the Cunningham after school. A hundred and thirty of them are staying till six o'clock. How many are staying until four o'clock? And so like, how many staff do we actually need to tier for that first hour, hour and a half? Versus at that point, you know, you can have some attrition of staff because you've had student attrition to kind of build up some capacity. So anyways, I don't know if we have any any data on that or can start collecting that at least this year.
Save. How would that save staff or?
Well, because if you only need a staff number four, an hour and a half, right? If they're only willing to stay until four o'clock. And actually, you have two additional.
Want to stay for an hour as opposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have two teachers who are willing to stay, right? That's, you know, a one to twenty one ratio. That's forty two more kids, right? Just by that simple math. Again, the issue is like holding parents to picking up at four o'clock. And on some days maybe more kids stay. So I just think having that data would be interesting. Because sometimes it's, it's not that we need to staff till six o'clock. We don't need the hundred and thirty staff members that that kind of marked this presentation. Last meeting had to actually all be there until six o'clock. So at that point, your student ratio to staff ratio is, you know, one to one almost.
And I don't know if I'm remembering correctly, but I think when I signed up for kindergarten, there was a choice of time pickups. I believe there were like two choices and it was the earlier and then the later option.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I can understand.
So you could, so I've just, so I think, I guess what I'm saying is maybe once upon a time we had the data.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, because, I mean, you used to be able to, I mean, going back even further than that. You say, oh, well, I want three days and I want this one till five and this one till four and this one to this. And that was back in a time when we had fewer students in that program. And it was a complete nightmare on the part of community schools' schedule because every day was different. It was great and flexible for parents, but it was, it was difficult. And over time, we moved away from that. To the point where you could sign up for two pickup times and then I think it's just one pickup time now as I recall.
Yes.
Just being a little older directly.
Well, because I think as I've heard, as I've heard Martha say, when you introduce all those options, it's, it creates layers of bureaucracy. Essentially for the administration of the program.
Yeah.
Um which I suppose is why we really need these assistant supervisor type site folks. That can do some, could do some of that.
Yeah, I'm not even suggesting that we like provide families the option to like only pay for a certain period of time. I'm just saying like. Human nature dictates that like when I go and pick up my kids at five fifty, there are not a hundred and twenty nine other kids there, right? There's twelve other kids at that point in time. And so, right, from a staffing perspective, if we're trying to look at it as, hey, we need. Again, I think the number was like a hundred and thirty staff members to all stay until six o'clock. That's a much harder thing to accomplish than. We need a hundred and thirty staff members to be there until four, a hundred and ten until five and seventy until six. And, you know, given it's not that attractive of a position. And then that opens up more opportunities for, again, potentially like paying somebody just an hour of overtime. Because that's actually cheaper than bringing somebody on for four hour minimum that's gonna, you're gonna need to do. Uh just opens up more more barriers. But it's hard to say that's useful without the data.
I mean, right now, they're, you know, because we're so strapped for adult staff, you know, some people coming and say, well, I can only work Monday and Tuesday. And so Martha's trying to pair them up with someone who can work Wednesday, Thursday and Friday and that way. But that also is. Not the easiest thing to do, you know, in terms of a managerial perspective and how you piece it all together so you get the coverage. I mean, to the extent we need to do it, we do it, but it's not the easiest thing to maintain as a, it's not a good model.
And I can also imagine from Martha's presentation that you start to get into the quality issue, right? Because rotating adults, it doesn't create quality for the student.
I guess the only other thing I'd like to share is like the thing that I think I tried to express in the last meeting that concerned me a little bit. From the presentation on this being like an expansion plan was that my takeaway from it is it really wasn't an expansion plan. It was a staffing, like, hope to, and essentially what I heard Martha say, maybe I'm wrong, is that. We essentially need a higher, we need to get down to the one to thirteen ratio before we're able to expand. And I think I would push back on that of, we obviously don't want to put our kids in a position where the staffing ratio makes them unsafe. But there's zero chance we're gonna be able to help all these families who are on the waitlist if our goal is to get to one to thirteen. Before we start bringing people off. And so I just.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you.
Yeah, so I, I, well, again, but if Martha's saying if the program's goal is to get to one to thirteen before we look to expand. I I just say from my position, those are inverse priorities and I just like to push back on that.
Can I raise another question? Because it's just come up with, you know, friends and people have reached out and this, I think. And and this is for me as well, is an understanding of how community schools relates to the public school. Because from the standpoint of, say, kids who have an aid or support in school. But then the message that they're getting is, well, this isn't part of the school, so they don't qualify, they don't get that same level of support. And so as you're looking at it and it's under the same umbrella from a budget standpoint. And then even just the way you were talking about Glenn that says if they're two, you're, you can't work for two different organizations. So I think from from a a family standpoint, there's no understanding of that. They're like, no, my kid's staying in the school. They're staying for the after school program, but now you're telling me it's a different program, so they don't qualify for the same level of support. And so I think having a better understanding of that and then, um so I think that that should really be communicated. But also as we're looking at the staffing to ensure that it is accessible to kids who may need support. And so I don't know if that's what, excuse me, these inclusion aids are and the the support, but is that? I I just think there needs to be a better.
It it it's, it is a tricky parallel because the community schools are a part of the Milton Public Schools. They once were a five oh one C three, but the school committee basically adopted them into the public schools when that was allowed. So they're technically part of the Milton Public Schools. Access in the afternoon. I mean, if your child has an individual education program in the day, that's, those are requirements for the day. That's a free and appropriate education. It doesn't necessarily carry over into the after school program. However, under Americans with Disabilities Act, they're entitled to access. It's a different kind of access.
Right.
It's it's civil rights more than special education access. That they're entitled to support, to, you know, reasonably access the program. It's not the same level of succeed and excel and, uh, you know, maintain a certain progress that you would have in a day program. It's, you should be there. And that's a a difficult distinction for people to get their head around.
Right.
Um us as well as them.
Right.
And you get into various legal questions about, well, is this, you know, what level, you know. A child with a medical need versus a child with a behavioral need versus a child with, you know, you get into various different levels. What is reasonable support, reasonable access for that child? But it really falls under the definition of the Americans with Disabilities Act rather than special education. So I mean, yeah, it's, it is, it's a hard thing to get your head around. And it's one of the things we've talked about internally is how we need to get that message out to people.
Right.
Because it's not, and of course Danielle is here, we should probably bring her up to the table. You know, it's, it's.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand that it's access, I think, though, we're just, we just want to make sure that if we are providing what's being talked about. As essentially childcare after school and we're only saying we're providing it to certain kids. Like, we just want to make sure that it is accessible. And and I get what you're saying, like, there is an ADA piece and it's an IEP and I'm not talking about that piece. It's just parents need to know what's available to them and that the same thing is available to them. And I just know that that's been an ongoing question for years. And then I think with this, with all the conversation around it, it's really risen to the top. And just should be addressed.
You know, it's a question, what 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 is reasonable access in the afternoon? If the child requires a one on one aid during the day. Well, what is that aid doing during the day? Does that carry over into the after school program? Because if they're accessing curriculum, that may not necessarily carry over the after school program. But it's for safety because, you know, they're, you know, they're a runner.
Right.
Then maybe it does, you know, so it's, this is all gonna be on an individual case by case basis. It has to be.
And we are, we are talking with CPAC about this, so definitely, it's something that, you know, I think we're we're looking at on every level right now.
Yeah.
And I think that that clarity is really important in terms of, you know, there's a lot of history, right?
Yes.
And so we have to like, I think we're at a time and and I think this year is a good example of it of really, we're trying to put everything on the table. Looking at what do we need to talk about collectively to to gain better understanding communally? And I think this is one of those examples of of things that, once we look at it and and we all understand it together, then we move and build forward together. So it's, these are all good things that are coming up and I think we have, we're increasingly having better communication to. Have whatever conversation we need to have and and move forward from it.
On the positions that are currently posted, I remember in the last presentation, one of the things that was noted was the nurse. Need to, is that something that's going, happening internally or are we also gonna be posting for that?
We, they're posted. We have a couple of our nurses who are doing some after school work. But this is one of those cases where, you know, if a child with medical needs is coming in, we may need to get more nursing staff. And that's if if you think adult supervision is hard to find. Trying to get nurses for a few hours a week is ridiculously hard to find. It's to the point where, you know, we've called services to bring in nurses and they go, we don't have anybody to go, it's only gonna do fifteen hours a week. We don't have anyone to go do this. Um it is, it's difficult. So that's, that's one of those positions. It's like sort of forever on our postings, our nurses, school psychologists and physical therapists. And there's a few of them that are just really uh an enormous lift to try to get in current.
Benefit of community schools with nurses is that they are tied to a scale like during the day. So we do have for any position in community schools, we have flexibility with salary that we don't have.
That was a question I had, which is, we didn't tie any of the, those positions to any other bargaining units at one point?
Not to, there are nothing after school, um no salaries after school are are negotiable by the, any of the bargaining units. They are strictly outside the bargaining units. To the extent that a recess aid works part of the day and then goes into school, but part of the day might be controlled.
Yeah.
By the bargaining unit, but what happens after school would not. But your, Peter's right, but the nurses, if we have to pay a higher hourly fee to get a nurse in there. Fifteen hours a week or ten hours a week or whatever it takes, we have the ability to do that. Whether we can still find anyone is a different matter.
Do we have any type of referral program?
Referral in one sense.
Compensate current employees for referring people who take jobs, right? Like you give two hundred dollars stipend.
No. I thought you were gonna try to refer us out to psychiatric care.
You incentivize people, current employees to bring in other people, right?
Yeah.
Understand the job and then again, they have some investment.
If they stay for three months.
Yeah, you usually stipulate.
Yes, right, exactly.
They have to stay for a certain amount of time. Yeah, you definitely do that.
Yeah.
But anyways, that just brings more, that expands the work. So that you're not just trying to find people, you have other people who are trying to find people for you.
That's a good suggestion. Like with the two hundred dollar gift card, you solve a lot of problems, then why not, right? I I thought Milton is a town with a lot of doctors and nurses.
They're all downtown at five times the rate.
Okay, well, thanks for keeping us posted. And certainly. I'll speak for myself. I imagine I speak for all of us, though our hearts go out to the families that are on the waitlist right now. And really upset and I know some of us have been in that position ourselves and it's not a good feeling. And we're just gonna keep trying to. Help more and more people, hopefully. So, right, I mean.
Yeah, and we'll, you know, after this raise, we'll, the salary raises will in a few weeks look at, you know, is it having an impact? And if it's not, then we'll look at other, at other options too. Um so I'll continue into the end of year, my implementation plan and. Kind of just showing a few uh slides on, kind of just, kind of a point in time snapshot of where we are in a few areas. Before I go through this, I just wanted to to kind of mention as we were getting to the end of the year and I was, I'm kind of just attuned. In my role to to get to June and and as we move towards June, really thinking about summarizing how we're doing. And and going into the summer with a kind of a clear snapshot of where we are in terms of outcomes. One of the things I've found this year is we have a lot of, we have a lot of data that is not necessarily. Connected to a system that we can analyze clearly. And a big part of the work this year in building out the supplementation plan. And figuring out where we headed is to to build that system so that we, at this time every year, we can say, okay. We've done these things, our students have performed in these ways, and we can say things about why. The data looks the way it does, as opposed to looking at MCAS data in the fall every year and and looking at it and saying. Well, we should try harder in in math or reading or grade three, or we have a blip in grade four. And gosh, grade five is doing so well and grade six isn't. And and it's really hard for us to say why. What what are we pointing to as an organization, as a learning community, to shift and move those data points? We have to go back to the the systems that we have to be able to say, okay, this, we implemented this curricula. Our assessment scores were here, we implemented the curricula, we had fairly reliable, you know. Implementation, so we know there aren't like so many confounding factors. We had this result, we now know that it worked in this way and didn't work in this way. Let's go in this direction or that direction in the following year. So that's the kind of thing that we should be. That's that that we're building towards. As I look to where we are right now and I looked at what data we have. If you look at, if you go to slide two. Um you can see from this spring assessment timeline, and it's not that the, our assessment necessarily has to be at one point in time, right? Doesn't all have to fall in June. But currently, like a lot of things in Milton, they're all running on their own kind of timelines and they're not. There's not a coordination of all these assessments towards some kind of end or outcome. They're all just kind of on the, on their own kind of trajectory. So, you know, the the data that I have currently today to share with you in terms of the high level is. Is kind of screener data from the winter and some national clearinghouse data. That is from earlier. So we we. Out of the implementation plan and and kind of what's come from all the work that we've done over the past. It's been two months, Glenn, probably we've been working on that. Is, I I would say is the the structures that we need to have a strong assessment system. Have clarity around what we're teaching and why we're teaching it, building out an instructional framework. So it's not, we're not teaching a textbook or this certain curriculum, but we're we're talking about how we're teaching. And that we have a shared understanding and and belief system around around how we're teaching. That's going to make all of this work and and my my communication with all of you in terms of how we're doing, I think, a lot clearer. Um and it will enable us to to be able to. And it will enable us to, to be able to make those tweaks and changes in our, in our system year to year to, to shift outcomes. I didn't want to let today go by without talking about this and talking about outcomes because I think it's a really important. Piece that we don't yet have in place and I'm not sure when we ever have had it in place necessarily. I, I think we have a lot of data and we have a lot to work from, but we have a lot of organization and structure to build. So with that, let's just kind of go through this and talk about some of our data here. Any questions before I?
What slide?
What's that?
What slide do you want?
The next one. That's, I think that's the old one, the old slide deck.
May I ask one question?
Yeah.
Would you please elaborate a little bit what DIBELS is testing for the English language art screening only? And then the iReady is reading is also English language art. And how about iDEP?
IDEP.
IDEP.
Yeah, so.
Are they all English language evaluations?
Yeah, IDEP is the French screener.
Got it.
At which we are in year, I believe it's year one of. And the, the DIBELS and iReady are both our, our literacy screeners. iReady is at the middle school level is both math and literacy.
Just to make sure that everyone is something, understand exactly.
Yes, well, there, there are so many acronyms that we need an acronym kind of like warning at the beginning of every slide deck. I always say I'm going to get better at that and I don't know as I do. Do you have the, my updated version?
It's not in the file. Let me see if I can.
Okay, I thought I was updating what was in the, in the folder, but I may have.
It may not have been.
I may have been updating a different one. It's okay. It's not that different.
You want me to bring it back up or you want me to try to find yours?
Some slides that I thought were extraneous. So that's fine. I'll just have you go forward.
Okay.
Dr. Burrows, is it normal that we have so many screeners like from K to eight, there's like. Two different kinds of screener for math and English. Is it like every single year that you're screening the student?
Yeah, I mean, these are actually, you know, these are benchmarking. So determining, you know, I'm starting the year math here. And then at the midway point, I'm here at the end of the year, I'm here. So they are important on the ground. I would say they're more important on the ground for the teacher at the classroom level to be making shifts and changes to. To, to better understand where the student is. So understanding the student, their, the, you know, 25 students in their classroom at the beginning to know, okay, these are the levels. You know, Selena has these kinds of strengths and maybe you need to work more here and here. So those are act, that's actionable data in the classroom to know kind of how a student is progressing along with all the other formative and substantive assessments that are part of the curriculum.
Cause I, I don't grow up right here in elementary school and I started eighth grade and it's already a bilingual program. So I read, I never have done these kind of screenings until I graduated from middle school and I had to take the, what's that called? ISE, right? And then, and then in 10th and 12th grade, we take the SAT. So it's, I thought that's standardized testing and I.
Yeah, these are more, these are more elementary, just historically. There was a time, you know, probably 15 years ago, I think in education, you know, secondary never touched. A screener or a benchmark assessment and it was really kind of like K three thing. This is like going back in education. There was like a movement to, to move up because people were realizing we're just assuming that students get it. When you go to middle school, it doesn't mean you're, you got it. Like, right? We still need assessment to know where you are, what, what kind of additional supports you need. So there was a move to, to do generalized screening up through, I know when I was a high school principal long ago. We had a ninth grade, I brought it up to ninth grade and then 10th grade to do these kinds of screeners to, to just kind of check and make sure. There are definitely times when you can assess too much and especially if you're assessing all the time and not doing anything with the data. And that's a pet peeve. Cause it's not, it's not, it's just, it's taken away from learning.
That's right.
Right?
Can I ask one follow up question to that? So do the, do the teachers get training on how to talk to fam? Like to, to explain the reasons, like the iReady or the DIBELS results to families? Cause I know like, I know DIBELS is new and I know sometimes, cause it's got the red, yellow, green. And I think we're used to seeing those colors and you're like, you know, so is there a training on that for the?
So we were just talking about that today. They, they, teachers do, are trained by our directors. So, you know, Brian Sally, you know, director of math is, has presented, you know, the, the whys behind iReady. So teachers understand how to look at it, how to explain it, how to talk about it. We are talking though about part of the implementation planning is assessment and what, what do we share with the community in, in terms of assessment? That's meaningful assessments that are helpful for you as a parent to know regarding your, your child. So we currently aren't, some of this data we're, we're current, is currently a classroom based assessment. That's not kind of going home to parents in the same way your MCAS results are.
Right.
And so we're, that's what we're, we're building right now is one, what, what assessments should you look at and see as a, as a parent? And then how are we kind of engaging the community in terms of, of that, of understanding what that is?
I'm really glad you're, you know, incorporating that into the implementation planning that you're doing. Because I think it's a serious challenge for. The lack of infrastructure to do that, to share that information with families, I think is, is quite challenging. And I think it, it can lead to. Yeah, it can lead to that sense of disconnect, but especially when I, I think there may be times that. And there could be reasons for it, but when other assessment data is shared with parents in the form of the report cards and so on. That may not actually line up with what's coming through these. And so I, I think that can be absent the infrastructure for communication and. Sharing of that information when those realizations can occur because you're able to request access to your child's data. Even if it's not, you know, proactively shared with you, that is confusing and troubling, you know, if you, when you see that. So I just, I think it's really good to have identified this is an area that we need to, this is part of the system that you're, you've identified we need to build. So I think that will be reassuring to families that feel confusion or just like dissatisfaction with the current level of sharing or lack thereof.
Yeah, I think it's a lack thereof.
Do you all get screener data? Do you all see DIBELS?
No. No, no, I, I mean, I started asking for it.
You can request it.
Through the teacher of the classroom?
Are we at least sharing with, because by the regulation, right, we are required to share with kids who are underperforming.
Yeah, I mean, if a parent requests to see that, we would provide it. It's a student record.
Yeah, I, I think the, so for those of you, this is a new regulation, right? That we are required to do a, specifically the DIBELS reading screener, I believe K through three is required. In order to flag for kids who are behind in their reading fluency, right? And that's a statewide mandate now. But like, we are required if kids are underperforming, significantly underperforming the benchmark in terms of reading on grade level. We have to share the results with the family and have the follow up communication. I don't think we're required, it's encouraged, but we're not required to share proactively with other families. But I just make sure we are, obviously we're in year one. I think you're, to the point you made, focus on implementation, communication is key. I don't really think that families should need to reach out about this, but some of that should be, should be shared. Engaged with. So, yeah, because I think I would, I have not reached out to my child's teacher. Maybe I will. I didn't think about that. But thank you, Selena.
You have one week left.
Part of the issue here is of course in, in grade one, if you're doing an English language assessment and they're in French immersion. What does that mean? So the IDEP is being, we're, we're actually a test site for, for DESI in terms of. Getting that approved is basically a screener for French immersion, which is obviously something they didn't think about when they said we need to. Check English fluency in first and second grade for students who are not in English.
Let's talk about English learners. Do you want to go to that slide? So I just wanted to show our, our enrollment and this is, is an area of focus and just kind of wanted to share a little bit about it. English learners have increased 70% over six years from 76 to, to this year 129. Expect that number to continue to increase. You all know that part of our budget was a request for an Yale coordinator. We're still waiting on the town with that, those ARPA funds. We've been checking, Glenn and I have been checking. We are hoping to use some of those funds to create a position to a halftime oversight of Yale and. And halftime instructor position, kind of similar to what we had in our needs based budget. So that's something that we're. We're counting on that, right? So, so we, we see, you know, as you can see, the enrollment's increasing. You can keep going here. Just some demographic data. Next slide. Here's a snapshot of the top five languages. See the increase here in Creole this year. And down the slide there, the next one. Okay. And these are our access results for 2019 to 2024. So this is a, an annual assessment. And kind of good, just gives you a sense of the, the different proficiency levels that our students are at.
Kind of a question?
Yeah.
What percentage of our students are moving out of access or flipping, right? Or becoming former?
Like per year?
Yeah, because the, you know, the number can go up.
Right.
If you're not moving kids out of that cycle, right? That designation.
Yeah, we are, I don't have the percentage here. We are moving students out. So it's not, that's not like. It's, that number is not 76 to 129, same 76.
Yeah, I did, I guess just looking at the, the data here, right, the, my understanding, if I'm remembering this correctly is. In order to move out, you essentially need to get a four above, right? To flip out of it. So like our, our percentage of kids who are doing that. Is lower now than it was obviously back in 2019. So, and that is compounded over years. So when that's compounding, that obviously is in addition. So while a hundred percent of that new growth is not caused by the lack of flipping, certainly a certain percentage of it is. That's a really important thing to, to monitor is what is the, the rate at which we're kind of moving kids quickly out of this. In order to get them into general education services, in order to have them be full inclusion and in order to focus more to invite, not spread your. Your attention across 129 kids instead of 76, right? So.
Well, that, and that's the, you know, kind of speaking back to what I was saying before, that's the kind of intention that we need to bring to the data. Is, is looking at some of these trends and then talking about what does that mean in terms of leadership of the program or the design of the program? Or other supports that those students make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think as a benchmark of a, a data point, like looking at like an out of our, all of our kids who started the year, what percentage are. Were able to move out of it is a, sorry.
You know, I guess I, that, that same question is sort of like. Data around like how long? Do you know what I mean? Like how long are they between like what, like? How many years are we talking about before their entry point to four, you know, so that. Right? Cause it depends on so much.
That's very individualized. Danielle, do you have any information on this? In terms of. Average, average that students, if you want to come up here.
Sorry, Danielle.
We're talking about.
Kind of entrance, entrance into our Yale program and then exiting the Yale program, what the kind of current. Average time span is for that.
I don't have it, but I could certainly get it for you. I think one of the challenges is within the first couple of years. I think some of our students were really identifying in the first couple of years whether students are learning and engaging in English, how much school they've missed. We've had quite a few students come in who have never been enrolled in school, particularly in our middle school. So our sixth, seventh and eighth graders. There are many that have never, have never been exposed to school at all. So there's tho, there are those newcomers. And then there are newcomers who have had exposure in their home, in their home country, but it's really variable. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, that was my, that was my percentage here, but. Do you want to go to the next one? I took out all the wordy slides.
Okay.
So this one is not.
So here's a snapshot I, I mentioned earlier that we don't have the spring data yet. So you'll notice that you generally see these numbers of, numbers being proficient. Increasing over the year. So from fall to, to spring. So we, I expect those numbers to grow. Right now you can see 60%. At the winter at or above grade level, ELA 70. I didn't go into all the deep dive data here because this is just, I just wanted to kind of give an overview of where we are. But, you know, we still are maintaining the gaps, our historical gaps with our, our subgroups. So that is still. You know, I, I don't see any significant change on that. So that is one of the things with our implementation planning as we're. Looking at building out MTSS, which I think is the, the biggest thing, multiyear system of support. That is the biggest thing that resoundingly from staff, from parents, from everybody realizes that that, that has to be. The, the kind of central and foundational work that we do next year is, is building out that system.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So if, so DIBELS is new this year, correct? And iReady has, is what we've been using prior to that, correct? Or is it?
I ready, this is year two, I believe, of iReady. So we, we don't have much longitudinal data yet.
I guess the question is, how do you, if we've changed assessment tools? How are we looking at the progress of kids? Like, because you can't compare apples and apples, right? So if you're using, you're going from iReady, if you're using iReady and DIBELS.
Apples, but not apples to oranges.
Apples to, apples to oranges. But you can't, you're not comparing the same thing, right? So how do you, if it's progress monitoring and we're trying to see about curriculum or whatever we're looking at? How are we able to, where the snapshots really small then from our starting point if we're using the same data? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think a couple of things. One, we're, through our research, we're, and, and looking at, at these assessments. We're, we're committing to using the data and, and believing the data. So this is valid, reliable data. We believe it's actionable data. So that's one thing. I think secondly, the, the bigger challenge around it, the, the longitudinal analysis is. Like in some ways, because we haven't had some of these systems in place, even if we had iReady in place. If we have no consistent system in place. That data is also like not helpful to tell us the structures that you've put in place are working or not working. So I, I think we're in a good place to have chosen what I think our industry standard. So I think we're in a good place to have chosen what I think our industry standard assessments, building the structure and then being able to look back and say, okay, we started here, we were doing these assessments.
Yeah, like what in the wrenches have been put in place, are they working or not working?
It would still be nice to have it, it would still be nice to have longitudinal data.
No, that makes sense. I just, yeah, I want to look at that.
And MAP is K to E. It's just the ELA component. So MAP is iReady, can never be great. And I think part of the reason for choosing M-class is that, is the exactly the dyslexia standard. And DIBELS, as far as I know, only goes to grade five, so it creates that.
Great.
Yeah, and I haven't, you know, in our conversations this year, I haven't heard anyone say, and we have to look at iReady or we have to look at M-class or, you know, there hasn't been any conversation around. And let's also look again at these assessments. I think people feel good about the selections that were made here. We have an SEL screener, which you can see here. This is in its infancy as well. And I think you can, you know, it's on five kind of key areas here. Social awareness, self-management, self-awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And it's self-reported. We are, our second kind of priority area of climate, culture, and wellbeing has, in our implementation planning, has focused on talking about gathering SEL data and how to respond to it. I think it's a lot easier when you get MAP data to know, okay, here's how we're going to respond to MAP data. When you, when you look at how students are scoring themselves around self-awareness, for example, like thinking about in, you know, in the student's school day and thinking about all the things that we do to support students, what kinds of things would be helpful to shift and move that? I think is something that is a little bit harder to get our hands around. We also have the vocal data, which we don't have yet. I mentioned that on the first screen, which is a state-required assessment. Do you, do you want to talk about, because you've been in terms of the SEL screener and utilizing this data as we make changes next year? Not this specific data necessarily, but in totality.
Just in terms of collecting and analyzing. I mean, just to your point, we're still very much in the infancy stages, but in terms of driving some of the social emotional supports of students, I think one of the really important areas to look at is around subgroups and their feelings of belongingness within, within their school communities, which overall, based on the vocal data we've looked at, looks pretty good overall, which leads me to believe that this type of assessment, I think, will give us more data over time and trying to figure out how we build those tiered systems of supports through social emotional learning. I think we have some, some starting points in terms of tier one intervention using home classroom, having adjustment counselors go in and teach our second step curriculum. We don't, we haven't really built capacity for tier two and tier three supports for students with social emotional needs. And currently, how we're looking at students who are sort of flagged through our student support team, there's a student support team process and there's a behavioral support team process. And really, I'd love to, I'd love to vision that as one whole child versus two separate meetings. So I think even starting there is going to be really valuable for us as we analyze this.
Do you want to go to the college and career? Okay. So these are just a few slides on national clearinghouse data. Really added these just to, one, kind of give you a sense of some of the data that we have, but we also need to collect more data on how our students do post Milton. This is information on post-secondary enrollment and employment. And there's just, it's a comparison to the, once MPS and once the state. And then the final slide there is college and career outcomes. And over a 10-year or eight-year period there, the average earnings by year for our students. So one of the things that we, and again, this is kind of a precursor to talking about and building what we want this to look like collectively, you know, in terms of an annual process to review how we're doing. Do you want to go to the what next? I might have to just, it might not be called what next?
It is.
As we look at assessment, we want to look at both how our students are doing to graduation and then we also want to gather as much information as we can about how they're doing in the world after they graduate and potentially doing things beyond just national clearinghouse, but designing our own assessments. And we have lots of connections to our graduates, so I think we could gain some pretty valuable information through survey data, through, you know, kind of other means of, you know, kind of groupings that we currently have to kind of just better understand how we're doing and how our students are doing. In terms of what's next, we have to do this work, the implementation planning work to build these systems. As we're doing that, we need to be talking about what kinds of KPIs are we looking at? So what are we, at this time next year, what are the, what are the big things that we're going to be talking about collectively to say, yes, we're making progress? These things are really important to us and we're coming back to those again and again. So it, so it brings a really consistent focus to those things with you all at the highest level of the district. So I'm excited. I'm excited to build this. I think we are well on our way and I, you know, sometimes you're in a position where you have a sense of what needs to happen and you feel like no one else is there yet. And you're like, oh no, is this going to work or not? But I, I don't feel that at all. I feel that there's a lot of, like very fast shared understanding here about, yeah, that makes sense, we need to do that. So I'm excited to build it, excited to keep our focus on outcomes. And I think this will be work that we'll be talking about this summer as we have our retrieve and make plans and organizing goal set, divisions, division, all those other things. So that's it.
So I imagine we would like to look at college and career outcomes by subgroup and earnings by subgroup if possible.
For sure. Yeah, I mean, we didn't, for this presentation, I didn't want to go to.
Yeah, to that level.
Yeah, so we tried to just say like.
These are the kinds of things you're looking to stand, turn on top of.
Yeah.
Just for understanding the college and career outcome thing, when it says post-secondary enrollment, is that only undergraduate or is that also master's or doctoral programs?
The master or doctoral would be in that cohort as they go on. So you can see it drops down, so that would be master or doctoral.
Got you. I wouldn't sure if that was kids continuing in undergrad.
Yeah, that's a class, that class of 2014.
No, the question is, you're not seeing 10-year undergrads on that chart.
But you're wondering because there's no way to know.
Near 10, that section is still in college is likely all post-graduate.
Yeah.
They're not, you know, we all know some 10-year undergraduates.
Yeah, I've never seen a chart like this before. So again, maybe it's just my understanding. But yeah, like the five-year, usually what I hear is the five-year graduation rate. Right? That's usually what you're trying to get.
And there is a, that from 59% to 29%, you know? I'm inferring from that, that closer to 29%. Sorry. So seven, oh, so even 74 to 33, sorry, yeah. So it's more like 33% are pursuing grad school, following their undergrads, some 33 or less.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine some of those are.
I mean, the minute we look at subgroups, that could be different.
Yeah, for sure. But I'm just, if you're, if a different benchmark is the five-year graduation rate, like that's just, it raises questions that can be explored, but yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions?
So I read this data wrong. I thought that, I'm not surprised since the pandemic that people are chosen not to go to college, they want to get a job or maybe get a gap year instead.
Oh, you were thinking it was a one class through?
No, I thought it was the graduation year of 2019 and then the graduation of 2021.
That would be a real.
Yeah.
Sad subject for parents who are in college.
So I was looking at this and I was wondering, like, people are not going to college, like they want to get a full-time job instead. Thank you for clarifying.
Quick question on the SEL screener. Do we, you know, we don't have longitudinal data within Milton. Is this at least a benchmarked assessment within the Commonwealth or within the country to say like, again, it's just to the point, I think that Amanda made, like, without longitudinal data with any of these, it's hard to know. And so are there other ways we're benchmarking this to know what is 62% of social awareness in elementary?
Right.
That you, you know?
I'm, in terms of whether it's a normed?
Yeah, just, you know, they share data across, again, all the schools that take this within the Commonwealth or across the, similar to what the, that larger survey that two years ago kind of we gave all the kids, where they was like able to share.
Like the BS survey?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the data that you're speaking of from two years ago was grant-funded a state.
That was pilot.
Assessment of the district and not specifically what's, how students are proceeding.
Yeah.
I think this also through grant funding, from Karen McDavid, it's an awesome grant, I think is normed through. So there was some research done into it to make sure that we weren't just looking at it data internally. I'm not sure, I'm not sure comparatively off the top of my head what that looks like.
So can I follow up on that? So then, is this SEL screener, is it a, this might be what you're asking, is this a standardized screener that's used across, it's not just a Milton developed one?
No, yeah.
And the SEL team, we have SEL leads at all our schools too. So they are collecting this data and looking at it and comparing it to normed data to know kind of where we stand and then responding to that. But that, again, that does bring us back to the systems piece of they're responding with their, an SEL lead in a building who has some ability to move and change things or the SEL team does, but we're working to like connect all these, all these pieces together.
One additional bonus to that, this is that we are hiring the director of school counseling in SEL, so I think that person will also be a really important piece of this data collection, analysis, sort of lead. You know, leadership dedicated to that, that component of our work.
And I know we'll talk about the calendar a little later and it will develop over the coming months as we plan, but I'm sure you're envisioning some more like regular way to kind of, I know we've been in a transition this year with the sharing out of this data. We've been moving from what had been a routine to, towards like what you'll set up as a new routine. And that we'll have the opportunity to like stay up to date on this next year.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of what I was saying about, I think we'll talk about that this summer.
Yeah.
Talk about kind of like what, as we're, as we're kind of building these things out and becoming here, what would be helpful in terms of it. And it may be different next year as opposed to the following year too.
Anything else on this piece? Is that it for your report or?
I could keep talking for a long time.
My daughter's softball game is underway at GIO, so it might be over by 9:30 or 9:45. I don't know.
I thought you might say, so I'm going to go to our vice chair, Selena.
But this is, it's great and I don't know if any of the rest of you are able to go next Monday. I'm planning to go. I'm glad you're doing that. I hope a lot of families will take advantage of that opportunity. I'm especially glad that you're, I mean, thank you for the whole team to take the time to come and be there. That's an opportunity I don't recall ever having been made available to the community to go and spend time with all members of the leadership team. Like, that's tremendous. So I really am excited for that. I'll move right into the chair's report and I think we can move through these things pretty quickly because I know that we have important things under our committee reports. So for the chair's report, Peter, you mentioned it, but I did just want to take a moment to also reiterate our congratulations on behalf of the school committee to our retirees from Milton Public Schools. The reception was really nice that we were able to have. That was one of the reasons we started a couple of minutes late tonight in this meeting because we came up from the courtyard downstairs where we celebrated our retirees. I would like to thank the cafeteria staff and the Milton High School custodians for their help in making that such a really great event, as well as Charlene, who does so much to make that lovely as well. And I just want to spend one minute to quickly highlight our retirees for this year for Milton Public Schools. So we were honoring Brian Board, who's a Milton High School social studies teacher. Kathleen or Katie Kane, an educational assistant at Pierce. Mary Ellen Comer, the Cunningham Colley Cott cafeteria manager. Jim DiMaggio, a Pierce science and STEM teacher. Barbara Doherty, who has been at Glover, Pierce, and then Milton High School in food service, I believe. Janice Gordon, Spanish teacher at First Cunningham and then Pierce. Colleen Quealy, a PE teacher at Pierce. Amal Radwan, Milton High School French teacher. Paula Smith, a lunch and recess aide at Glover. Joe Thomas from our IT department, who has provided tech support, especially at Glover and Pierce. Marika Varnerin, food service worker at Pierce. And Kathleen K. Walsh, a Colley Cott custodian. So just thank all of them for their service to Milton Public Schools. And it's always at the end of the year, you know, we're appreciating our, our faculty and staff for everything they've contributed to make this a great year in Milton. So thanks to all of those retirees especially. For the next pieces, and yeah, Glenn, I mean, sorry.
Annual retirement, is that what?
Sliding under the radar because. Just because and.
He really likes the return reception.
But no, it's absolutely true that it doesn't, you can't go without saying, Dr. Powell, we benefited from your support this year, all your leadership. And yeah, as I know, we keep joking, like hopefully keep benefiting from your wisdom in the months to come. I know, we still have a few weeks and when we get to. Yeah, we're working on that. So if you need part-time. Yeah. Yeah, that's true. All right. So real quick, just touching on our calendaring because as we said, this is the last official meeting of the 2023-2024 school year. We typically meet on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Third Wednesday of the month is. We typically meet on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Third Wednesday of the month is Juneteenth. Holiday. So we won't be meeting on that date. And we, we're only reserving the need to meet the final week of June after school is out if there were like outstanding issues that we needed to resolve. So at this point in time, we're not planning to do that. Obviously, as we all know on school committee, if something happens and we need to meet about, we will figure it out and we will meet. But as we look, we start to turn our attention to next year, we have a couple of things. So for, I want to first talk about the summer meeting schedule and quickly ask, in having reviewed everybody's summer schedules that you shared with us in looking at your schedule, we were wondering about July thirty-first actually as a date for our retreat, whether that would work for us.
On what time, to what time?
It would be like, we've tried to do it after the workday. So we've kind of done it like four to eight, five, five to nine. You know, and then we just have dinner and have more meaty working sessions than we are able to do during our quarterly governance retreats because this is able to be longer and we're really gonna have a couple of key items. We're going to revisit the Governance Core, the book. Now that we have Amanda, she will have had the opportunity to read that book. It will be our opportunity to revisit the book because, you know, a year ago last summer, obviously with our first, the rest of our first time looking at that book and using it to set the tone for our collaboration with you Peter. So we'll kind of reset around that. Our learnings from that. And then we'll turn our attention to our goal setting. And that's the key purpose of the retreat is to like really let us think forward to next year and the goals in relation to what you're thinking about for, um, goals for the district and yourself. So does the thirty-first as of now work for people? Okay, then I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna plan on that. And I'll ask Charlene to send out an invite for that. And then well, what, what's better, four, four, four to eight or five to, does five PM start work better? Okay. So it'll be a five PM. Five PM start.
Five to
Nine.
Five to nine?
If we can end early, we can end early. So.
Four to eight?
Yeah, maybe.
That's way past my bedtime.
It's nine o'clock now, so. Let's do five, let's do five to nine. And if we can be efficient with our work, maybe we don't need to stay until and that's July thirty-first. So it's really only, it's a, you know, about a six-week break that we don't have regular school committee meetings happening. We'll be, come back together on the thirty-first. And then it's August twenty-first is when our normal school committee meetings pick back up. That's always the one we meet before, the week before school starts. I know that a couple of us are not gonna be available that week for that meeting, which is okay. As long as the rest, the other four of us are available, who didn't say they weren't, wouldn't be, then we have a quorum to have that meeting. There are important things that happen at that meeting that need to get done prior to school starting, including the approval of handbooks and whatnot.
You wanted those the day before?
Yeah, hopefully we're gonna have those with plenty of time to actually review them. Yes. We're moving in a good direction with that, but yeah. And this is just our draft calendar. We're not, we don't need to discuss it at this point in time. It's really just putting it out here. This is sort of, you know, Charlene mapped this out. And I don't, you know, we'll, we'll use this and refine it and update it as we need. Does anyone have any questions or anything? All right. I think that's it for my chair's report. So now we already did our climate action planning committee. Finance and Mark handed over to you.
Great. So we have a few, we have one vendor warrant to approve.
Sorry, can I just say something quickly because I realized everyone listening might not know that Mark Loring is officially the chair of our finance subcommittee and Anne of Argeis is officially the chair of our policy subcommittee. So thank you both very much. That's why I'm handing it over to Mark. He's the chair of our finance subcommittee. Thank you.
Yeah. So send out the vendor report. I did forward that to you, right?
Yes.
Trying to continue what Beth started last year. So I will make a motion to approve vendor warrant forty-seven and the amount of five hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents payable on five thirty twenty-four. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? And there's no vendor warrant this week. I guess we'll continue to sign them and then we'll try and approve what we can in July meeting. That's it.
Thank you so much, School Building Committee.
Yeah. So obviously public comment hit on it a bit. So there's potentially a lot to share. We had a visit from Walter Timmeltie's team staff to share a bit about the timeline as it relates to the land swap. Their, Walter Timmeltie's office continues to say that like things are going along as normal, although we are, you know, at the very late hour as the public comment mentioned. Essentially, the last, the end of July is when the opportunity to kind of get this, the land swap done ends because we needed two-thirds votes and there will be no other kind of in-person meeting of the legislature until next January. So that's kind of what is on the table. And then next January will be a new session. And so the whole process would have to start over again. So it doesn't mean that they'd vote on it next January. It means that the land swap would then need to go back for a first reading and then a second reading, et cetera. So, which means that that is kind of what the public comment meeting of saying like it delays us probably at least a year. The other issue that was shared through that process is that we are currently in year two of the two-year legislative cycle. And in year two, many, many more bills get passed into law, several hundred versus in year one, usually less than a hundred get passed. I think the number was like this year eighty-six got passed in year one and the last year two cycle was like four hundred and sixty. As, again, I, I think those are approximate numbers. So it, it again, is just means that, you know, there are fewer things that actually get attention in the first year, more things kind of get pushed to the second year. And then, so that puts us at risk of delaying this even further. So we are trying to do what we can. And I, gotta be honest, from the conversation of the, the person from Timmeltie's office, he didn't give a whole lot of hope as to like, there are things to do that it just needs to move through the legislative process. I think advocacy, my perspective is something that I think is good and appreciated the public comment at least sharing. Because I think, you know, there are hundreds of bills, as has been said, and so lots of attention is pulled in many different directions. And so if you can coalesce attention as certain, right, then it certainly can't hurt.
Including like land swap bills from other towns too, right?
Yeah, I think I, I like went through
In a batch. So Milton's not stuck by itself. It's with other communities, land swap bills, right?
Yes, most bills at this point have not been passed into law. Again, you can see all the legislative bills. There are like forty bills that have some Article ninety-seven connection. Seventeen of them appear to be kind of land swap towns doing what we are trying to do to swamp around land. And at this point, from what I can tell, none of those have been passed. So we are not unique in that way. It's just, I, I, it's difficult to tell where all of those bills are in the process. So as the public comment said, we are right now waiting on the third reading in the Senate to then get a vote in the Senate, to then go to the House, to then come back to a, so there are just, there are still a lot of steps. And at least from my own research, it was difficult to assess kind of where ours is compared to others. And I'll say, I, I didn't gain a whole lot of clarity from the comment that was shared by the chief of staff from Walter Timmeltie as to like where, where exactly ours is compared to others. So that, that's obviously very important because that could mean that, you know, it would either delay a vote or we'd be going into a vote on funding for the school without knowing for sure we have the land, which obviously is not, would not be ideal. So that's, none of that is certain because we obviously have until July thirty-first. So we're continuing down parallel paths. The architects made, have made a lot of progress, again, on a lot of work with Peter and the internal team as to the programmatic elements of the building and refining that. And there's work that needs to be done to kind of refine that further. So that, that work is still continuing and we have another meeting this week on that. And then at the same time, kind of there's this, the land swap work that we're trying to push through. So and then I think the school, the select board, if I'm not mistaken, in order to have the chance of having a vote in the fall, select board has to put that on the, they have to vote to put that on the ballot by, I also think the end of July. So those are kind of like
The first week of August.
Yeah.
Vote for what?
Vote for funding for the school building. So again, as we've shared previously, the, the goal, the timeline, we've really been pushing towards in order to move with as much urgency as we can is to have a vote in the fall, at Fall Town Meeting, and then the November election and kind of time it there. So you don't have to have us pay for another special townwide vote or something like that. And so those are the things that all need to occur in order to make that happen is can we have the land swap process? We need, that may or may not happen by then. And it's questionable as to whether or not it has to. But then you have to have select board and select board's not gonna put something on the ballot without knowing the cost. And you can't know the cost without refining the program a bit more. So all those are the pieces we are continuing to work on.
I think the only other part that I would bring to you is that we did talk about, obviously, the land swap not being done is an, is a concern, but not, it would not impede a debt exclusion, you know, vote in the fall. Because to, I think the chair's point at the meeting is that it's an appropriation. And so obviously, there's no land, there's no spending. But, you know, in, in, in technicality, we, we could take a vote. Obviously, it becomes a, just a more complicated explanation to the town, right, for folks to understand. But it doesn't need necessarily that, you know, we need to halt and, and not keep moving forward.
Is there work that needs to be done with the select board? Is there a meetings or, I mean, because obviously that's something that has to be approved by the select board. So understanding that there are new members and new cast of characters. How does that, is there? A couple of parts on that are, we are, you know, have, we're gonna be, we're having a couple of meetings with the chair of the select board, Richard Wells, and I have gotten to have one, a couple of meetings. We'll meet again with Nick Milano and you know, Amy Dexter, Joanna McCarthy, Town Treasurer, and Peter and Glenn to just stay abreast of the various factors that inform the entire situation, including what the select board will be doing. And we're continuing to have meetings looking into next week that will also include Sean, Chair of the School Building Committee. So another layer is we're in the process of trying to arrange the opportunity for select board members to take, if they would like, tours of the school buildings. So I know that's in process, trying to schedule those opportunities for any select board members who feel they would like an up-to-date, up-to-date opportunity to kind of experience firsthand what we've been talking about all along, right? But if that's something they want to do now, we're working to arrange that. And hopefully they'll take advantage of that opportunity so they can be informed. Of course, there's a, you know, a caveat that as we reach the end of the school year with all these field days, special events, field trips and et cetera, it's, you know, that's a, that's a reality that, you know, school buildings in these couple of weeks are not the typical, like, average school day that we saw, for example, when, when the facilities advisory committee was able to take those tours, which were so valuable. But I think we want to be providing information. And so that's, those are a couple of the things that I think might answer that question.
I hope they could. It was very different touring the school than watching the video for me. So
Right, yeah, you recently experienced that recently. And having been narrative as you went through.
For sure.
Yeah, so
Select board member, the new John Cohane is now, was appointed on the School Building Committee as the select board's rep. So that was his first meeting joining. So he's now a part of those conversations. It's great to have him.
I do have a question. I know you mentioned that you guys kind of working through the programming and that would impact what the budget is gonna be. Do you know by when we would have that information, especially if the select board has to put it in by July thirty-first or August?
Yeah, there are meetings every week. I, I think we've done the bulk of the kind of visioning with all staff. So we've had a lot of meetings with staff have come. We've had twenty staff. We've had ten staff, so different kind of groups have been part of building it. I, I think I would guess, you know, within the next month, I think we would, they're gonna have honed it down to a square footage that everyone can kind of agree upon and feel like, okay, I think that makes sense. And then come up with a number of what that might cost.
Yeah. I mean, we kind of need to get it done within a month, right, in order to make sure we have a number that the select board can vote on. And obviously then make sure we're communicating to, to the town. We are, again, as Peter said, like there've been some visioning where essentially the goal has been to figure out like, what are all the things that really programmatically? And then from there, needing to whittle it down to say, all right, these are all what we'd like. You know, that's always our eyes are, you know, bigger than our stomachs kind of situation. And so what do we whittle it down to? And the balance, as we talked about within the meeting of, you want to whittle it down to make it as small of a project that therefore is small of a cost as possible and impacted taxpayers. But also not to the point where you're actually building something that doesn't work for a programmatic element for the school, right? And so like you, you just need a certain amount of space for it to make the project work. Otherwise, you're gonna make everybody mad by spending a lot of taxpayer money and actually not providing a good experience for students or staff. So that's, that is where we're at now. There is work that the School Building Committee Chair, Sean O'Rourke, is working with Nick Milano and Amy Dexter, trying to build out this, what I think you and I have chatted about previously and other people have mentioned is like this tool to assess the impact of taxes based upon an estimated cost. So like trying to build out that tool with a, just a placeholder number at this point of like, say a hundred million dollars or whatever it might be in order to ensure we have that to implement as quickly as possible. So I think they're, they're actively trying to work on that piece is my understanding, so that it can be implemented quickly when we have something closer to a reasonable number.
And is there kind of like, hey, here's my, our max that we would like to spend and we would like to keep it below this? Is there like kind of a sweet spot so that? Because I think it's important to give people enough time to kind of figure out if they can afford it or not, you know? So it's just to be fair. And I, I know like, I think it was Situ recently passed a school building project and I think it was like six months before they presented it and had that calculator. And I think it was like a series of videos that they did that said, year one, this is what you're going to be responsible for. And then year twenty-five, I think that was their twenty-five year. So I think that would be really helpful to kind of just, you know, and I think it's a, you know, great opportunity to be transparent. I mean, this is something that we really need. I mean, this is something that we really need. So I think the more transparent we are about it and the needs, I think it's, you know, a stronger argument.
Yeah, no, completely agree. And I think that's, that is the goal of creating some tool like that. It's simply the time crunch that we're in of trying to move quickly in order to be ready for the fall. Because if we miss the fall, then we either have to call a special town meeting and a special election at some other point or wait until the spring, which is obviously a delay. So those are all the, the competing interests. And in terms of like, is there a specific number? No, like I, I think it's, again, a big piece is this balance of, the number would be great as to make it as small as possible, but what does that mean? And so I think it's an imprecise science that the group, the committee as a whole will need to be talking through and obviously then get approval from the select board to determine this is actually a reasonable number that we think has a chance of passing within the town and will put out to the town to, to see what they think.
And it's hard because, you know, if the number, whatever the number ends up being, is the, the design at its, you know, kind of like optimal design, meaning it's not too big, not too small, it's, it's just right. If that doesn't, if that number is too high for whatever, like what's the right number? Which I think a lot of people have asked, like what's the, what's the right number? As we know, like over time, year after year, these numbers are just exponentially growing. So if we come back to this issue in three or four years, where now it's even, for, for those that it's hard to afford now, it gets increasingly challenging over time. So it's just, it's a, yeah, that's just one of the realities I think we're, we're kind of trying to figure out.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, Anna. Over you.
All right.
Danielle, thank you for staying with us.
Yeah, for staying. We knew you'd be back.
I'm going to invite her to every meeting.
Love having you here.
Don't do that to her.
She's smiling on the outside right now. I said you're smiling on the outside.
I mean, like, now this is past my bedtime, but.
So tonight, we did, actually just to give you an update, we have had two policy subcommittee meetings since we last met. We had one yesterday to go over sections E and F. There's not a lot of them there. And Glenn has so kindly gone through each and every policy and has made notes, which you'll find in your folders for each of those. There is policy EFD, which is the meal charge policy, which has some updates that was made by our food services director, which we went through that and, I think what we decided to do, sorry, I'm just toggling between notes. We decided to approve the, approve that as, and then, sorry, we made, there was some discretion around the clarifications and we made edits based on the MASC version of that policy. And then, so there is a list for review. So tonight we would have to do an expedited reading and vote on policies E and F. And then a few weeks ago, I think it was May 21st, we met on the revised residency policy. Incorporated all the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. And then Danielle was also present at our policy subcommittee meeting to answer any questions. And we felt that it would be great to have her here today to kind of put a lot of things into context for us, which was really helpful for our subcommittee to kind of understand where she was coming from with those changes. So. Yeah, if you guys.
Should I start with questions? If you want to ask questions or should I? What's easiest?
Do you want to go through the residency policy first? Or do you want to go through the others and get those out of the way? Time to be there.
I'd say Danielle's here for the residency policy. Let's help get her out of here.
Sounds good.
I feel like Danielle, when you came to the subcommittee, it was helpful to just hear, because you have been the person sort of on your behalf that's done a lot of this work of the research and coordination with Serena, our registrar, and like understanding, you, you shared with us like your rationale for the changes that were made. And I know you've sort of overviewed some of that in our conversations here, right?
But didn't do a good job.
Well, like Danielle did a really great job. With that.
It's okay.
No, that was, I just think that bow, not bow, sorry, Amanda and Celine Altman might benefit from that version of that.
Sure. I've had the opportunity to work with Serena since I started, really mainly it started on the homeless, McKinney Vendo students. And then I had the opportunity to sort of take on registration and residency in the winter. So I have, you know, she and I meet weekly to discuss the needs of students and her stressors being the only person doing both registration and residency and the sort of pull that it, the pull that takes on her to try to manage both and balance both. So in some of this work, a lot of her advocacy is within this policy. Specific to, I know there were some questions about why including, why is it important to include third grade? Part of the reason that we discussed this at length was around just the continuity and having that residency reestablishment every three years helps provide an equitable approach to, to residency because what happens in that first six-ish years between kindergarten and sixth grade is that Serena receives a lot of tips or to investigate and it's a lot of added time and task on her. So by adding in that additional third grade component, it offers her something to ground her in as, you know, if something comes to her attention where she needs to investigate, she can actually look back at those, the previous reestablishment of residency and be able to say, nope, we reestablished this last year. This student is where they're supposed to be and lives where they said they live. So it does provide that continuity rather than waiting that five-year to six-year waiting period between sixth kindergarten and sixth grade. When we were doing a lot of research and I have to give a ton of credit to Serena for calling many, many districts, both within our comparable districts within Desi, but also districts that are unique like Milton, where we're near, near a city. We're right on, on the way to Boston, so it's easy for parents for drop-off and pickup purposes if they work downtown. So she was not only calling districts that are comparable through the Department of Education, but also other cities and towns. And there is a wide variety of approaches to re-verification of residency, from yearly to hiring additional support to support those investigations. So some schools don't ever reestablish residency, but they have a number of people who have ongoing investigations with different, different residences that come up as questionable. So we sort of worked together to figure out what worked, what would work for Milton based on all of that information and data we collected. And like I said, we looked at policies from other districts. She actually cold-called quite a few districts, including Newton, Winchester, Belmont, C-Cong. She, I think she called all over the state, Boston, her connection, Cambridge. So really we felt that it was a nice, it was an equitable approach to looking at residency on a continual basis. And the same for, we've had quite a drastic increase in owner occupancy certifications. And those really haven't been monitored in the district over the course of years. And it really is something within different districts that reestablish that every year. So that was why we sort of put that on the, on the residency policy as well. Question, I know that was probably a little place, did I miss anything from?
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So current, the previous policy was K69, right? Or, or entry 609. And then we've had the same procedures in place, which essentially for, for whatever, like verification, people calling things in, et cetera. Have we seen, and, and knowing that zero is unrealistic and I don't know what a big number is, but have we seen, you know, do we have an average number of people that we find, families that we find?
Yes. So I think this year it has jumped pretty drastically. Glenn had said, I think the numbers jumped by 14 between last year and this year in terms of investigations that we've, tips that have come in, investigations that we have done and, and found that students don't live in the town. And that is from a wide variety of demographics from all over town. So it's not just one area, one subgroup. It's really, as our, our statistics show that we, it is all over town.
One of the things we're doing now is reestablish through PowerSchool. We can now, for the first time, really track people who start a residency application and then for whatever reason realize, oops, and withdraw from the whole process. So the sort of, they, they try to enroll and realize that not being able to enroll, disappear. We've never been able to track that before. Track people who enrolled and that we found out that we're not residing here and put them out. But we've never been able to track the number of people who realized that our process was not going to let them improperly reside and then withdrew their application for whatever reason or another. So that's another interesting data. We've only had it this year. We don't know what that totally means yet. It's no real data to talk about it. Except that it's just one year. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. If that, or if we can find out what that actually reflects.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So if we, I guess if we have a policy, if we have a policy in place and we have procedures and the procedures are working, like the, the system is working in that we, that people were found to not be here, what's the need to add another layer in? And I guess, and then similarly, you know, I know that you mentioned some have yearly. I just would be curious how we fall into that. I know some of the things that we looked at, like a lot of surrounding districts, they, it's, you register and then that's it, like there's not that reestablishment of residency, so.
There are some that have that. There are some that, that have practices or protocols, but don't put it in their school policy either. So that was noted quite a few times. I think for me, it's, it's also time. The amount of time it takes Serena to go through an investigation is really cumbersome for one person. So in addition to her, in terms of efficiency purposes, in terms, when you're thinking about case screening, pre-case screening and reestablishment, plus any tip that comes in where she has to then organize a group of people, such as our school resource officers, to really start that investigation, looking in her databases and doing a lot of that research. One, it feels, you know, it feels more equitable to add that additional time in. So that way it's across the board, it's across the district. And two, it, it does, it is time-saving for her. Because then, I, I think I gave an example at our, at the subcommittee meeting that, you know, something happened this year where she had just reestablished residency of a student. So rather than going through that investigation process, she knew that that had, she knew that she had already reestablished that residency. So she could sort of take it off of her plate pretty quickly.
And not subject the family to.
And not subject the family to.
An investigation that was ultimately unwarranted, yeah.
The other piece too is if you rely on tips to start investigations, there's the question of targeting.
Right, that was the other piece.
And, you know, maybe more likely to be, have a tip on a family if they have a non-traditional relationship or something like this, or, you know, or target a demographic, target an economic demographic, target all sorts of things, whether deliberately or inadvertently. And just by saying, well, I've got grade three with everyone. It sort of takes that arbitrariness out of it. And I think that was part of the discussion with the equity of it.
Right.
Is if you're doing everyone, you're not just getting the people who, some people say we should look at that.
And alongside this, in terms of the, the policy piece of it, we have been working on ways to improve our practices on giving all families access to be able to reestablish residency or even register students by, we started talking about monthly office hours so that families could come in. I know there are some families who only have access to their phone for wifi. So allowing them an opportunity to come in and meet with Serena or Marty or Brad to, to work off a computer because PowerSchool is a little bit more cumbersome through a phone. So we're alongside some of this work. We're really trying to meet the needs of families in the district as well.
So if I can just clarify a question, it's 14 that you found that did not.
I mean, you have to.
So 14 out of how many investigations? And then wondering, this, wondering if you are tracking data on the demographics of the families that are being flagged as not living in.
So I think that that piece of data is, we're just establishing that this year. I think the data that Glenn has from years past is really just families who were found to not live here. I don't know if we have the amount of investigations. Serena just went on vacation today, but I know that she does have an Excel spreadsheet where she does track the investigations that she, the tips that she gets. So I can definitely.
So for, as of May 31st this year, 15 students were removed, particularly. That one I have. So the last few years, it's been 11, 13, 8, 22, 15 over the last few years. So that's your order of magnitude you're looking at of students who were removed for residency.
Your question was how many investigations have led to that number?
Yeah, I do not have that for sure.
Understand, right? In terms of the volume of how many families are flagged? And of, you know, that, how many are actually true? Right? And then I also want to take it one step further. And I want to know who is flagged? Because I think regardless of whether we put the third grade or not, if the who, there's a bias in the who. The third grade, yes, there is an equity piece to it, right? Because it's everybody, it's a universal ask of everyone. However, it's not going to get rid of the targeting of families because they fit a certain profile. And that's, that's a bigger issue.
The targeting.
Which is not in the policy per se, right?
Correct, correct. So I, I get that, you know, this will help in some, in some ways or we could see it as, as being helpful. However, it will not address the bigger issue. But I would like to understand what that, what that looks like.
In the past, I mean, going back pre-COVID, because that's when I had the pleasure doing what Danielle was doing now. I know we were doing 50 to 60 investigations a year. That, that was the ballpark. And, you know, the, I don't want to call it the success rate, but the rate, the, the number of residents, of non-residents we found was roughly one out of four, one out of three, something like that of those investigations, somewhere in 15 to 20 range. When we first started doing residency checks, the numbers were much bigger. But I think, you know, people are aware and there's a psychological effect. I can remember the first few years we did, when we first instituted residency checks in six of nine, which we didn't used to do. I think we had 50 to 60 non-residents each year for the first couple of years. Because it was what we were at that point in the, you register when you register. Because it was what we were at that point in the, you register when you register. And it's only when it's challenged after that, for some reason, that we've investigated. You know, mail coming back or something like this that caused an investigation. So I think the fact that people know we're looking has had some psychological effect on it for sure.
So Serena, the point you're raising as far as, yes, none of these proposed changes would get at the problem of bias slash targeting within the tips that come in. And I don't even, I mean, to me, that's really a bigger conversation that wouldn't be addressed by a policy anyway. But that's a conversation about racism slash.
Classism.
Classism slash just forms of discrimination that may be either implicit or explicit in our community. And we know that that's a reality. What I hear you saying about the practicalities of introducing the third grade check would be that you could head off investigations that would be in that three out of four current ballpark, three out of four current investigations that do not result in finding that child doesn't live here, right? So those, the sets, this is really, it's general because we don't, I don't know what the number of total investigations is that led to the fifteen for this year. But however many of those investigations you conducted, that, that child lives in Milton and that family went through an investigation slash, there was a lot. Serena had to do work on her end to complete, to do the investigation. Like the, it's, it's not getting at the root problem you're raising, but it could address some of the, the lived experience consequences of the environment on families and on Serena in terms of her work efficiency, right? Is that, I mean, am I understanding this? Am I?
Yeah, I just, you know, if what we're, you know, because there's challenges, right? Like part of it just feels like it's adding one more layer. I understand sort of, and I appreciate your explanation a lot, that in this case, right, another universal check across, which is an equitable way of doing it, you know, is, is good. And it will sort of, from an administrative perspective, ease some of the actual, I think, tips that actually become full investigation.
Exactly.
I don't think it's going to address the tips. That's what I, right?
It won't address the tips.
Part is, and so I guess, I think we, if we look at it from that perspective and we acknowledge as a body that, yes, we're adding one more layer. And the purpose of that layer is to not necessarily catch people, right? That the reality is because it is, there is a burden on the administration side to actually, you know, follow through with, with all of these. And that, this would give you another, another touch point by which you've already done that. So you can go back to and look and say, no, it's, it's done. We, we know that they live here. And it's like, you don't have to go through the full investigation. But I, I do think that then we still need to acknowledge that it is beyond the purview of this policy to address the bias that comes and that triggers it. And so I think acknowledging that is important for us. Doesn't, and it doesn't mean that we have to solve it here together because that's a bigger town issue that is beyond the control of the schools. But we need to.
Just naming it is important.
I think there's also work that we need to do though, too. So there's like the, the town levels piece that you mentioned. But I think in terms of our team, who have to be pretty attuned to when tips are coming in, how to process those and how to work with those. I, you know, I, I think it's a conversation that we should continue to have with the residency team as a whole.
Yeah, and I think that acknowledgement is, is very important. I think one of the, one of the pieces of the, the addition of the third grid is to not only reduce the burden on the administrative piece, but also on families to not have to go through that process over and over, sort of once. And hopefully, you know, when, when Serena has that information, if a tip comes in, she, she can sort of ground herself in that more consistently than that once every, that first K to six break is a big period of time, so.
Couple, can you clarify again, just so I heard you right? The number of tips this year, I mean, the number of found instances where kids were removed, fifteen, is that what you said?
Oh, actually, I haven't updated one of those. Fourteen tried to register but could not prove residency and then didn't, never registered. Another twenty-one were removed.
Twenty-one were removed?
Yeah, that's a email.
I think it was fourteen last year.
It was fourteen last year.
Fourteen last year.
And, and twenty, and this is the first year we could track, tried to register but did not register. There were fourteen of those this year and twenty-one removals this year.
And you said like, two years ago, we had twenty-two removals.
Yeah.
It was like between fifteen and twenty-two.
Yeah. I thought at one point I heard the statement that like, the number this year was jumped. But then when you shared the historical, it seemed like it was in line with.
It's, I mean, it's been fairly constant between thirteen and twenty.
Yeah.
The last few years.
But it's not much.
All right, this is just the first year we've been able to track the start to register, but do not complete registration. And that's just because we're using Power School to do it. So that'll be an interesting data point at some point.
But they could just stop registering for all sorts of reasons.
Yeah, there could be any number of reasons that could happen.
Not sure.
You know, so, and I don't know that we necessarily, or even any position to track why that happens. But it's just an interesting data point.
Yeah.
So just some quick math, right? Twenty-one out of our four thousand three hundred and twenty kids is less than point. It's less than five tenths of a percent.
Yeah.
Of our district, right? So just to name, like, the concern that there's some broad issue right now is extremely small. So I, I think to the public comment point, we are spending a lot of, you know, we're spending time, which I, I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time, so we can do multiple things. But this is, I think I agree, but that seems like it is overstated that we are spending a whole lot of time on this, given the, the effect. But you are saying that from a perspective of administration, right? We have three hundred and forty-six third graders this year. So the process of gaining and reviewing data from three hundred and forty-six families in residency is more efficient than conducting sixty, you know, one out of three of these is good. Like conducting sixty additional investigations. And I guess my only other thought on that is, I assume all sixty of those investigations are not third grade, right? Some of them are, right, out of these twenty-one kids, we said it's across grade span. So some of these are probably middle school, but this is not going to solve. So we're not actually talking about eliminating the sixty down to zero. It's be sixty and now it'd be forty. So we're talking about like a difference of twenty investigations and three hundred and fifty third grade residency.
Perhaps. I think, I think just to speak on behalf of Serena, and she's not here, obviously, there are probably a lot more that she, tips that have come in, where she has been able to stall them because of a residency, because of a reestablishment of residency. And I can give you the example of a student who had reestablished residency. Someone had brought a piece of data to our attention and immediately Serena said, oh no, we just had this residency check recently. This is just an old, you know, prescription.
Yeah.
So it's, so I think from her lens, it, it does create an efficiency for those tips coming in. So while she may fully investigate sixty, there may be ninety to a hundred that she's, tips that she's receiving. I don't know for sure. That's just a number of that.
And tips can be as much too. I mean, tips used to be more along the lines of return mail. But we don't do so much mail anymore. So it's the, the, the demographic of the, the tip has changed as well. I mean, when we used to send everything home through US Mail, every time a, a letter was returned, in which we put do not forward on all of them, that was the start of a residency investigation. So that's, that's a group that we see less of. Because other than report cards, a few other things, that much gets mailed anymore.
Danielle, I mentioned, I remember you shared something before about by introducing the third grade check, there would also be a way, to your question mark, to schedule that sort of proactively during a less busy time of the year for her in relation to other registrar tasks that are taking place with kindergarten registration or so forth. So that seemed to be an element of the efficiency where you can schedule that check during like a month that she doesn't already have a lot of other things coming in or something. And that would allow it to kind of even out the year, like kind of even her work out more. I don't know if that, I'm not explaining it the way you did.
No, no, no.
But that, that seemed like a logical thing. But I also want to just mention, like, what you were saying, Mark, in terms of, and sure, like what during public comment our former colleague raised. I mean, it's a valid point. And also, I guess I'll just explain for myself my interest in being able to have this conversation for, in the context of our policy review for this year. I mean, I think this for me is in the context of taking a systematic approach to making sure that our policies are as clear as possible, as thorough as possible, and are sort of aligned with what we know to be good practices, you know, in other places. I think the amount of conversation at the warrant committee, just at town meeting in general, this year around this particular topic, we know from this conversation, is out of proportion to the scope of the issue. So given that, I would, I feel invested in just being able to go through this policy review conversation so that we can say, and to shore up our data collection practices and to be able to be transparent, to have, I think, the addition of the clear procedural language in the policy is helpful. I mean, it, it makes it very straightforward for people to know, this is what we do. And then in future, when these same questions come up, because I gather this is a question that just has been raised for generations in Milton, and I don't expect that it's suddenly going to stop being asked just because we have been thinking about it this year. But to me, it's easier to be able to say, that's really not something we're worried about because we've just been through this, you know, we have a system, it's working, we have a clear policy, you know, it's updated. Like that, to me, is the reason to have adjusted time in it now when we do have to member us, and these former member us, and these point, a lot of other things to worry about. But to me, this is to address this now so that we can stop having to address it. Because, you know, there are a lot of other things that we need to focus on. That's true.
Yeah, it's just one more question, because I, I think I missed this on my last reading, and I think you said it. The, the other piece that we're adding here beyond the third grade is the reestablishing address every year for.
Property owner certification.
Property owner certificate. And that's not something that we do under the current policy?
Correct.
Okay. So that, that is the additional, that is the other app. And that from a management standpoint, administrative task standpoint, is we can get something that's even out there.
That's a more common, that's more common based on research that we've done too, that property owner certifications are reviewed yearly because it's someone sort of saying that this person's living with me. And so those I don't think have been, those, that number has jumped to, do you have the lays, I think sixty-four was the.
Sixty-two is the last one I have.
From.
From fifteen, two years ago.
Yeah.
So it's.
But that's a simple process for the person to just state on the form.
It's an updated form.
That, yes, this family, this person still lives with me.
Yeah.
But you're mentioning the renter, like the, the, I will also, I do want to acknowledge, I think it is important to acknowledge that by adding the third grade check, like I do think that is an, a burden on renters, especially as the reestablishment has become easier through Power School for homeowners. You know, renters do still have to get a notarized form from their landlord, which depending on how helpful your landlord is, could be really challenging. And so I think that is in, among the things that need to be named, like that's, you know, for families that rent and need to go through that process, that is actually adding a, like an added responsibility for them. It's more time-consuming for them than it is for homeowners to go through the process. I think the question is, does that, does asking for that, like, make sense in the greater good of what we're trying to accomplish with the adding of it? So I think that seems to be what we're talking about.
Yeah, the notarization was added as a reaction to a few cases we had years ago where we found landlord was basically, would, would sell you a rental without you actually living there. We had landlords who were saying so-and-so lives here, and they didn't. But they were paying the landlord for this piece of paper so they could register at the schools. And what we needed to get is to sync the statement on there that says, if you knowingly sign this without, you know, with knowing it to be false, you're responsible for the, the per pupil tuition for the student for the year. And in order to have that enforceable, it had to be notarized. So that was the origin of the notarized. And of course, it's a balancing of, is the burden on the renter worth, you know, how does that balance against the prevalence, or the former prevalence anyway, of the landlord for hire? You know, that we were experiencing twenty years ago when we put this in. It, it's, it's a question that could be easily revisited to say, is that? You know, are we, are we solving a problem that no longer exists? Or not to that extent.
I mean, I think if there were things you could do that remove barriers for people who are renting. And not just, it's, it's, I mean, it's not just a, you know, that's a lot of time and then it's the added effort.
I think my other question is trying to understand the process. So if you have a second, third and fourth grader or a third, so you establish residency or you have at, you have one of your children, you're establishing, reestablishing residency in third grade, but then you have a second and a first grader behind them. So the next ones, every year, you've got to, the next kids have to reestablish residency in third grade and then the next time year. So by you, I mean, it's conceivable for people, you're, you know, every single year. And so I guess that gets to the question of, if part of the value is that you can say that there's a tip that, oh, we just did this, then why doesn't that hold true for reestablishing residency? Because you just did it. Do you know, I mean, it just seems like there, the, the process.
For a family versus an individual child.
Right, if you have, right, if you have somebody who register them in kindergarten and then you have somebody come up behind them, you could be, and then, you know, they're first and second grade, they hit third grade, you've just established residency, they're going to fourth grade, the next one you establish for third grade. You know, you could be, and I just, I, I don't know. I, I just wish the policy didn't feel like so distrustful of the people, the residents, that even the piece about, that you were just saying about the, the lease, it's just, I, I wish we weren't doing something from a place of distrust when we are, it's just, already feels like it's, there are so many checkpoints and that it just is saying, nope, we still don't trust you, we're going to add in a third. And I just, I, I just don't like the way it feels. It just doesn't feel very respectful of people in town. And we're talking about, and, and not that anything, you know, obviously, if you don't live here, you shouldn't be going to school here. But we're talking about fifteen to twenty-two a year, it's not seventy, it's not. I just, I don't know, it just feels. It's not, I just, I don't know, it just feels a little tail wagging dog on this one. And I have a very, it just, I feel very unsettled by it.
Yeah, and I think if we use renter, if we use renter as that proxy for income, then what are we doing to the families that are, you know, sort of, we're adding this other, this other burden on them? And so that just doesn't, I, I agree with you, it just doesn't feel right.
I, I just, I wonder if I, you might have asked this in the last meeting, it stuck with me. Like what problem are we solving? Like, I don't know that, are, is, is this all about solving a perception problem? Because that's what it feels like, that, that we're adding something in because there is a perception that we have hundreds of students who are going to our schools that don't live here. And I mean, the numbers aren't saying that. We're adding in a level, a third, at third grade, to your question, that's a percentage of the bigger percentage, right? Of the bigger number being looked at, where we're adding in one more check at a level of third grade that we're already saying we have a process in place where we've, we're finding people who don't live here. So I, I, I don't know, I just don't understand the.
This is where it's coming back to what, like, the staff is requesting to allow them to do their jobs efficiently with the mean staff that we do have. Cause I think it's, you know, in, it's interesting to me in looking at the research from the other districts, that some of the districts that don't check residency on an annual, on an annual or every three-year basis, have like five and six full-time residency people.
And that's not even the registrations.
Where that's their job is doing, invest, full-time jobs of doing constant investigations. Like, is that actually, I mean, so I totally appreciate and respect what you're saying. But I also think that, like, there's different, you know, that's a culture and like climate of a community that to me is, is less respectful and less welcoming actually, when you're just constantly sending out.
Resource officers.
Resource officers to people's homes based on tips in the absence of updated information, which could easily show that these people live here. So I, I, I really do hear what you're saying, and to me, that's why this is one of these ones that's not easy to work through. But I think it's, it's both, it's two sides, like we're being told to, that it is, I think you're right, to identify a perception problem, like that's probably on some level true. And it's also like the fact that we have one person, you know, and we have needs-based budget that we can't get fulfilled with instructional positions. So like, that's our reality in Milton at the same time. And so creating a system that allows us to get the work done most efficiently, I think, is part of it too.
So in, in that context, if we follow that sort of, you know, frame, couldn't we treat renters the same way that we do homeowners?
I think that's what you were just saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously a risky take. But if we're talking about equal treatment, not even equitable, because if we wanted to be equitable, we would treat, we would do something else.
Right.
But equal treatment, wouldn't it be that, you know, renters are not asked to do it on a notarized basis? Cause might as well, all of us, it's all of us.
No, renters are.
It's just the notaries.
The notaries makes it.
I had that same.
No, the notaries, so the property, the property owner.
Make sure that the property owner does it, right?
That's not notarized.
Every three years, okay.
We're talking about two different things.
There's three different things, there's homeowner, there's renter, and there's property owner certificate. So the renters have a, a lease, they have, you know, usually have something in their name that we can identify that they live there based on. Property owner cert is, I'm living with a family member or a friend or whatever, I have no bills in my name, there's no rent, there's no, you know, I'm doubling up with another family for, my family or another family for whatever reason. That's the one that, there's no paperwork. So that's really there for us. That's where we have the property owner's certificate, which is the newest.
But that's not, that's not a notarized.
That's not notarized, but that's every year.
Every year.
So that's just the property owner says, yes, this family is still living here.
But the rental agreement is notarized.
Rental agreement is notarized.
Even though we also, again, likely have utilities in the name or other things as well.
Likely.
Likely.
So I'll jump into and just say, I know that Serena works directly with landlords and with families to help alleviate some of that, exactly what you're saying. So I hear your point and acknowledge it, and I, I definitely appreciate that side. And I, you know, I think from Lizzie's perspective, that's sort of where we were coming at when we were looking at this, like, rather than have no sort of oversight from K to six and have all of these investigations. And to me, that felt more distrusting to have to constantly do that. And so that's where we were coming from, from this, from this lens. But I do have to say Serena works really closely and knows, I think, every landlord in town. And will often call just to help support and, and get those families over the hump of rentals, because it is, it can be. And I think she's looked at leases and called and helped get those agreements in place that, to Glenn's point, just to ensure that, that, that is a, that is a lease with the student's name on it and follows that protocol, which is pretty standard practice for school districts.
I just want to add, I know in our last conversation, what, I had some time to reflect on what you were just talking about, the way our residency coordinator and registrar help family, one person that does two jobs and also spends a lot of time helping families. And I was thinking, like, she is basically the first point of contact when you're trying to register a kid to school. And this process, what we're reading on paper might not seem, you know, might seem very restrictive. It's a document, you know, it's, there are legal references, there are all sorts of things. But I think what she as a person, as a human being, you know, helping a family that doesn't speak English or helping them register, that's really what reflects, you know, it should be like shared out there. Like, it's not like you're, I'm not going to the website and saying, oh, here's our policy, I should provide all these documentations. I'm going directly to the school. That's a parent's experience is going directly there, you know? And, and the feeling that I got is that she takes a lot of time and care working with these families. So like, there might not be any feelings in this person, in this document, that policy that we're looking at, but that's how all policies are, you know, it kind of feels a little. But I think the process that we follow, and she's asking us to help her with, is something that we should really commend, that I, I'm amazed that one person is doing that much work.
And our family, yeah, and I think we've met our family liaison Marty McKenna, as well as Brad Spindel, who helps with the Power School side of things, but also some of the registration. We've all met and sort of like built protocols off of this, not this policy, but off of our current policy to really sort of document what we sort of go through for the process for each family and, and how we can improve. And I think some of the things like open office hours, I mean, they're, they're sort of volunteering their time to say, I can come in in the afternoon, one of us can come in the morning to really make sure that families are feeling welcomed and know the registration process if they can access it in different ways. And like I said, I think to your point, she is calling landlord, she is calling to help follow up and taking a lot of time to do that too, so.
And honestly, I really think that if we make this process easier for her, that's what she should be doing more of, that doing investigations, you know? And if that, this alleviates some of that and helps her focus on the families that need the help, then I think that's what we should be about. So.
Yeah, I agree, the strongest aspect of this is, again, if it's a request by the, the staff to do the job better, more efficiently, that, that's a strong reason, I think, potentially to do it. I think the, the counter consideration is just the impact on families, right? Like, what are we balancing here between kind of what makes things better for staff within the districts? And then, you know, how is that impacting our families in terms of added burden or not? Is the calculus, but.
And I do think about this point as well, taking around having multiple children going through Milton. And I think that's something that we need to put into our practice of if, if we have three third graders in a row, is that, are we reestablishing? Because as soon as sixth grade.
You're doing it again.
You're doing it all over again. So I think that is important to consider. And I, and I truly believe, and I, I can't speak for her, and I never directly asked her this question, but I do think she does consider that even with the sixth to nine, because a lot of students have transitioned into sixth grade at the same time, or the year before another student. So she is encountering that now, so.
And these are, you know, before Danielle, I don't, when did you step in, was it January? Yeah. Before Danielle stepped in, in this role, I had a few meetings with Serena. She was working primarily with Garth, who was heading this up. She was sharing the, the need to kind of review and reestablish and, and look at the, the process. She didn't use the term policy, she just said our, our process and procedure in the conversations I had. So, you know, this, this was internal conversation. I think she was, what she shared with me was a, a level of overwhelm in terms of the amount and the number of things to do, that this would, these changes would be helpful in, in bringing the, bringing more focus to the work and less kind of helter-skelter, like, that, that's kind of what I got.
Can I ask a question about, so in the, in the language here, we reference the landlord living agreement. That's the paper that a renter would be submitting at kindergarten, third, sixth, and ninth. Or currently kindergarten, sixth, and ninth. So you're telling us, you know, the landlord living agreement set happens right now, it has a requirement for a notary?
The property owner cert is the notary, I think the landlord living is not.
Landlord living has the notary. I haven't dealt with property owners.
Yeah, I think those are notarized as well.
So I guess my question, my question is, you know, those are, that's, those are the names for those documents? Like, what those documents require is also like a decision by the district, right? So if at some point, go ahead and to your point, like if we could revisit the need to have those landlord living agreements notarized? Like if we maybe take some time to look into that and understand the extent to which that does provide like an undue burden on renters compared to property owners? Like, that's something we could keep looking into. And I guess my question is, if we were to pass this policy with referencing that, like nothing's stopping us conceivably from continuing to improve these various tools of the process, right? Cause I don't see in the policy, I don't, I actually don't see in the policy that we're requiring that, is my point.
It's one of those pieces from Holiday, one from Holiday.
Yeah.
I also, anecdotally, and I can't speak, because I haven't been working on this all year, and I'm not part of every investigation that Serena does, although she does keep me very informed. She, there's only one, one family I can think of where there was a discrepancy around the land, the landlord agreement, living agreement, out of the, the number of investigations that she's involved. I think to the point of thinking about how big of a, of a challenge it is.
Both the landlord living agreement and the property owner cert are notarized. I just checked.
But I do, I agree with you, I think.
But it's like, like it's one thing to get something notarized with the person you're living with. In theory, that's an easier thing to do than your landlord who may live in Boston or anywhere.
Florida.
Yeah, that's. So when I've heard from people, that's what presents the challenge, is when your landlord is not like living upstairs from you, and then it's really challenging sometimes.
And my understanding is that the landlord can go to the bank and get things notarized from the bank?
Generally, yes.
So it shouldn't be that difficult, but like, as you said, only if the landlord is not being responsible with the request, then that would become an issue. So I, I assume that if the landlord expecting a pay, a check from the renters each month, then this one time per year thing could be easily done?
Could be, but depends on the landlord.
Most districts we looked into did have a landlord living agreement. And again, I think it varied based on how often they did their residency, but almost all, I don't want to say all, but generalized, but most of them had some landlord living agreement arrangement.
Do you know if they were notarized?
Not off the top of my head. I looked at the forms to see how they are as compared to theirs.
Okay, so this has been a meaty discussion, Danielle, what do you think? Where are we at with this? I mean, what do you all think?
Want to make a motion and take a vote, see what, what's want to do?
I think what I would like to suggest is that maybe in the fall, kind of get an update on this and how this, once we vote on this, kind of look at this policy and see how it's going and kind of look at it and see what are the challenges, what are, what are we kind of coming across? So that, you know, I think maybe next year, maybe even revisit it and see, collect some data around it, like, you know, you know, figure out from Serena, like, hey, how has this improved hers work? Does she need additional support, you know, does that make sense for her to have? You know, is this adding this third grade, is this really a challenge? You know, and look, kind of look at that information, what is kind of the feedback been? And, or should we look at what, I know it's tough with limited budget, but like, look at what other districts are doing and add more resources to residency? You know, and just kind of not have a formal policy if that is a concern, you know, and then do more of the kind of investigations type thing. I mean, so there are really two ways we could go about it. But I think my recommendation would be to go forward with this one and then get an update in a few months, if that's possible.
Certain things too, like the question of whether something should be notarized. That's not addressed in the policy, that's something that we could sit and decide, we're going to change the form and change this or change that. I mean, the, the policy is, you need to recertify exactly how we recertify. The details of the various forms are, you know, something is, is an internal procedure that we could look at too.
Then. Could I ask, sorry, can I just ask a quick, just as your, so just as a clarifying question? By adding, by adding the third grade check, the thought is that there's less work and there's more, it's more, it's done more equitably and there's less work for the team than by leaving it as it is without the three-year? Like, there's, there's, there's a rationale for adding the three-year from the workload standpoint?
From the workload standpoint and from the, the burden and impact of families that maybe sort of investigated over multiple years between the kindergarten through sixth. But I, I, from an efficiency standpoint, certainly Serena takes a lot of time through those investigations and is pretty thorough. And I think for her perspective, having that, having this set date is helpful.
I guess, can I just throw one other thing out there? I, it, it's, it's, like, just even that piece of it, it's, it's like, it's a staffing, I don't know, like, we're, we're, it sort of feels like we're solving a staffing issue with a policy as opposed to looking at like, like, if it were, if it weren't, if, if we weren't doing budgets the way that we are, would this be the approach that we took?
if if we weren't doing budgets the way that we are, it would this be the approach that we took? Like, are we? Or do you know what I mean? Like, is it, is there a reason, would there be a reason to do third grade otherwise? If it weren't to say, we only have Serena and two other people that are helping it, and Serena's doing registration and residency. Do you know what I mean? Like, are we?
I mean, I think from a, from a standpoint of looking at this in terms of the sequence of years, I mean, the fact that we chose sixth grade and ninth grade was just simply because people were moving schools. There's no rationale to that either. To me, having it be three, six, nine is at least a a sequencing of every three years you're you're checking. People move all sorts of different times when kids are in middle of elementary school, the end of elementary school, right? Like, moves happen all the time. Or people try to come in all the time, too. It's not just at kindergarten. So we have, you know, that happening all the time, too. So in terms of the, what what I don't personally like is the impact of getting into this investigation mindset and then blowing that up even more by adding more people out there, like investigating, trying to find things, which is the exact energy we're trying to get away from. So to me, like, having like a universal screener type of approach where we have the data and everybody's doing it is a is, to me, the better kind of response than having, I know there are some districts that have two or three people, right? That are.
Yeah, more than that.
So you you know, in those districts, that means that there's a lot more sleuthing going on.
Right.
There are a lot more conversations where I'm like hanging out by the water cooler, listening to what's happening. It it's just, it's a, it, to me, it it begets a different kind of culture, which is, I think, what you're talking about in terms of the tips and what happens with tips and who is being tipped off and who's not being tipped off, right? So that's where I kind of like, when this was suggested, kind of thought, and and as we've looked at it more, thought that this was a better approach than adding more staff.
And I didn't mean staff from the standpoint of checking residency, it just seems like the whole process is understaffed.
Yes.
So that's, I can think that was the question is like, are we solving an understaffing process problem by adding in more checks? And that's just under stuff. No, no, I know. I, yeah.
Yeah, this isn't where I'd want to put more, like, if we can solve the, not problem, but like, make this easier logistically from a staffing perspective and keep it to one person by updating this policy, given that from the data, this isn't a problem, that we should be spending more time or monetary resources on when we could be hiring another reading interventionist, right? That we didn't get or the, yeah, or like any of the million of other things we we know we want before this position.
Anything from a continuity, from a continuity standpoint, as Dr. Barr has mentioned, having that consistently, I think it goes to the structures and systems that we're trying to build from a proactive standpoint and rather than a reactive standpoint. And by sort of putting more resources into investigating, that just feels more reactive than proactive. And so adding this in feels like it alleviates some of that reactivity of investigating. So not only does it efficiently help our residency department, if you can call it that, I do think that it does, as I mentioned, take some of that burden and impact off of families who may be targeted more often.
Right. So I think it would be.
Which in my short time, I I have seen particular schools have higher, higher higher tips than other schools. And so this also provides that continuity across every school building.
Right. So I think to Anna's point, it would be helpful and to your point about collecting data, just making sure that you are, like, it is checking in, like, how is it impacting the system and 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 the data that, you know, does the data, do the tips change? Does anything change in that regard or not, you know? And I think it would just be interesting to have.
workload tube with using Power School now as vehicle for registration, reregistration. We've cut down on a lot of things. You used to have the, you know, a copy of your property, you know, for a homeowner, we can look up on the town's website, who owns X, Y, Z Hudson Street or whatever, we can, we can look it up and see. So we don't ask for that anymore. You know, we can, there's a certain amount of information that's available to us. So in fact, the number of papers and pieces of information that's been being asked for is down from where it was.
I mean, Serena asked me to remove a lot of what was in there, what were, what are in other policies because she has access to that database.
Yeah.
Like a landline?
But, you know, there is, so in terms of, you know, saying this is strictly for workload of the staff. Well, you know, there is some efficiencies to the workload of the staff by making this, you know, electronic, which a fair number, you know, a good number of people take care of, and for the people who can't, you know, that's Serena and and Marty and others who will will deal with it. I mean, we, I fielded a call two days ago from someone who couldn't do something in Power Schools. And they, I, so Serena, she said, well, come on in, we'll meet this afternoon, you know, it's, that's, you know.
Yeah, that speaks volumes to like, have one person do two jobs and still take the time to care and help families. I think that speaks volumes about, you know, our staff. And that's what matters at the end of the day, their experience, not what's necessarily written in paper, but the experience that they have. You know, I I'm very grateful that we have really committed staff who who take care of our families and make them feel welcome. And, you know, that's what we should, we're all about. So I'm happy to hear that.
So I'm trying to figure out how how to say this. I think, you know, on paper, sort of, fine, this policy, sure. But I do want to acknowledge that for some residents, some community residents, this policy inherently is seen or received as racist in classes. And I just, just want to say that, right? And I know why we we do it, right? And 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 the need for it. And it's, and it's fine. What I would like for us to do is to commit to do rigorous analysis of the data. And not just, okay, how many did we catch, right, violating the law? I would like for us to commit to saying, we're actually going to look at these tips that are coming. And actually looking at the data of like, how many of those did we actually follow through? How many of them did we find that were true? And really look at it over time and really commit ourselves to naming if, in fact, this ends up being one way by which members of the community can target folks, profile folks based on race, income, or other. So that's what I would love for us to do. Because if we don't do that, then we're just arming certain folks a little bit further, really, honestly. So I just think that it's important for us to look at the data and to acknowledge that this is received in in a certain way. And I'll even go on record, and maybe they'll come back for me, I was one of those kiddos, right, that my family didn't have, didn't know what to do with me. But they had a good friend who lived in a different district who could take care of me after school. And I benefited from a loophole. They might come and charge me now.
There may be a statute of limitations on that.
I'm just saying that, you know, how it's received, it's important for us to acknowledge that and to make a commitment that we're going to be critical and look at the data and name it, not because we're going to solve it as a school committee, but for us to then look at our town and say, what are we doing, folks? This is how this is playing out, and that's important. So I just.
So what could that look like? Thank you for stating that. I mean, really important points. What could that look like? Is that a present, is that like a a presentation next? At the end of next year? Sort of at this, at a school committee meeting where we are able to quantify the tips, the investigations, the results? You know? I know that, I know that we're just, like, this year, in this, in all these other areas you were sharing in your report, we're creating a new baseline of what information we collect and what we do with that information, how we let that inform our decisions. So, I mean, I appreciate, I I'm, I feel comfortable to move forward voting on this with that commitment as part of the conversations personally. But I I think it's good and it's true, and that is in our, I mean, we're talking about our calendar. I mean, I can type it into our calendar right now, when we want to do it, you know? Say, we're working towards that. We're going to have that report. We're going to talk about it. And like, I think that's completely in our purview to do that, even as there are so many elements of this topic that go well beyond our our purview.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think, I mean, a simple Google spreadsheet that tracks by grade, demographic, and like, all the information starting in Power School, right? I don't know how elsewhere you'd track that, but if we have student IDs, you can pull in. Again, all that to also see like if it's targeted at certain schools or not and things like that. It's all very interesting.
I love data, so happy to do it. I just, I think it's important to note that it would be a baseline, right? So we're working to improve from there, because we don't really have comparative data for before.
And I think, I mean, part of improving our process and how how Serena do her job is also, I think, if there is a process in place, right, there might be less of this tipping or whatever it is. Like, you know, and that's kind of what we want to move away from in general, right? Like, we have a process in place, there's no need for you to do that. We don't really care, like, because we we have a process that we follow, you know? And I think that hopefully will kind of lessen some of that as well. That's how I see it. And I think one of the things that, you know, I know we discussed in our policy subcommittee meeting was, you know, families that have to use, like, when I first came to America, I stayed with my cousins for several months. And then my cousins were like, all right, time to move out, like, because it's hard for family to take on another family. So we did. And so I think, like, in terms of that, like, it helps identify families that really need to stay with a relative for long periods of time and kind of help us, you know, provide resources. We have limited resources, so we can really identify those families that need that support. And I I look at that as a positive, too, in ways our district can help these families. Yeah, so anyway. Well, should I? Go ahead. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy, JFAA residency policy.
Second.
I, I, you know, I think this has been a really tough process, and obviously we spent a lot of time on it. I feel like these conversations are really helpful. It's really not about the chatter that's out here, out there. We're getting the information. We're collecting all that information. We're taking this process. I've learned a lot through this process. And I really appreciate all of you from the perspective that you bring to the table and to this conversation. And to Selena's point, I think we should revisit this in a few months and see how it's going and look at that data. Because I think it really helps us kind of continue to improve our process, right? Thank you.
Thanks.
And then, oh.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
For coming.
Yes.
I wrote down a lot of feedback, too, so that we can start even improving our practices just outside of this policy, too, in terms of ensuring that we're providing all that families need to to be in the district, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for letting me stuff out.
Thank you.
Go Celtics.
All right, so then there's section E and F. I hope you had a chance to read through ones. Well done notes on each of them. So I would make a motion to approve the revised section E and F of the Milton State Committee Policy Manual as listed on the agenda using the expedited approval process.
I'll second it. What's the expedited approval thought? Just that?
Just so we can get it in before.
You don't need two readings. You don't need two readings. Basically jump to a second reading.
Your first and your second readings in one, and the the reason to do that, obviously, because of the timing of our meeting, but it's also when a lot of these changes obviously are very, what's the word?
Perfunctory.
They're perfunctory, yeah, they're not substantial meaningful changes such at like, on the level of what we were just discussing.
Yeah, I just, I don't think, we haven't used it on the other.
We haven't used it because we don't, we don't need to use it, and now we want to wrap this up. We didn't think it made sense to do a first reading in June and a second reading in August.
Great, sorry.
The the one policy that does have some changes is the meal change policy, which is brought up to date with the fact of universal free meals and so forth.
Yeah, so it's perfunctory in that way. Those are more or less like.
Wouldn't give my kid a second.
Straightforward.
If he has no money on his account, he might just keep paying for those honey buns.
What happens to the money, though, if they don't? Because it said you have to request refund or you can say you want it to go, if you don't request the money that's left in it?
If you don't, if you have a balance, when someone graduates, I think it automatically sends it to you. We can't keep it.
Yeah.
Much as I'd like to, we can't.
Oh, that's because it just said you have to.
We keep the debts, though.
That you had to request.
Yeah, we we keep the debts. We don't write them off, but we have to keep the debts, but we have to return positive balances.
Okay.
Although we do allow to transfer to a sibling or, in some cases, just donate them to a fund which we use for students who just may not qualify for, you know, maybe free and reduced, but have negative balance anyway because of other reasons. Some students just, oh, their parents, actually, just choose to donate into that fund to support others might might benefit from it. So there is that as well.
Can I make the motion to approve minutes?
Oh, wait.
Oh, you did.
I did, I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor? Glenn, will you come back to our policy in the fall? We would love to have you.
Just for fun. Take a bridge in policy. Can I make a motion to approve the minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty four Milton School Committee meeting?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Sorry.
I'm tired, yeah.
We do have that, like, some of them are in thirty rule.
We do, but we're just trying to get this all done. Okay, so Mark, do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm just going to second it.
Second, all in favor? Okay, thanks.